Okay, I'll call the East Line Board of Selectmen Special Budget Meeting for February 22nd, 2023 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Wendy Sims.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And if the board will agree, we'll move registrars to right after we'll go the order, but after zoning, we'll put registrars in between zoning and IT. Is there any objections to that?
No.
Okay. Moving on then, the first item will be 117 planning. Gary. Are we going to put his up on the board or? No, that's he'd be planning. I don't know if we have that available. That's, I think, for the police.
Oh, okay. All right. So don't you know who's U.S.
We think.
Yes. That is.
We can only do planning because it is not in the agenda for in the wetlands book. We can always do that in no time.
Are we ready for him to begin?
Pardon?
Are we ready for him to begin?
Well, as soon as we get his budget up on the screen, so people watching.
While we're waiting, could he highlight the changes that are made to what was in our budget booklet? It's very difficult to go through this at the last minute.
Certainly.
Kevin, Emily suggested use also the projector so that the viewing audience can actually see them if they want to.
Okay. Okay, won't they be on the screens as well?
Well, the camera view is what the audience ultimately sees in that recording.
Okay, so we have to pull the screen down here.
So if you pull the projector on to the screen down, then that would be behind you if we show them.
This time.
Hey, how are you?
Yeah.
Okay. Kevin, could you highlight the any changes that because you handed out some updates ahead of time?
For planning or just overall everything?
For just planning right now as we go through.
So as we can see here, the first segment's proposed budget, we cut 15,000 from the the new environmental planner assistant town planner line, 15,000 dollars, and we cut the miscellaneous supplies account in half based on actual expenditures in the last couple of years. So those are the two primary, those are the only two cuts.
But those are the same as what we have in our book.
Yeah. It was about the same thing.
These are, so it's the same in the book, but those are the new, remember we talked about the new papers, I say the first selectman column, that's the only adjustment to this. So the new papers have the first selectman.
I think even that one.
No, that says 80,900.
Yeah.
It's the same number.
The one below it, the 30,000, the 15,000.
Yeah, because you have board and the ones that I have in my book, it shows board of selectmen proposed as well.
Okay, so you're saying under new environmental planner assistant town planner is department had requested 30,000 and then first selectman proposed 15?
It's all matches, right?
Is that?
Okay, yeah. What you handed out tonight matches that, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
There were a couple like that.
So you're talking these numbers here.
So these, the only numbers we're updating is 24.
Okay.
24 copies.
Got it.
Yes. So I was just updating the last column right that has the numbers in it. The first selectman proposed, the original budget book didn't have that, remember? We just had the summary page. So I went through and as we're going through these, I'm printing a new budget workbook based on those comments we initially had the first meeting.
Okay.
So all these, the numbers aren't changing these budget workbooks, they're just, we're just updating the formatting. So you have the newest formatting. So when you review, all the information's there for you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
And last comment, if you have any, if you're curious about any numbers, that front worksheet, the operating expenses, I think it's 17 pages, it's the second tab in the book.
Yes.
That's like the guiding.
Yes.
Those are the, that's the guiding work paper we're using.
And you updated that.
And I update that as as we go. That's the.
Okay. Okay, Gary, go ahead. You're up.
So as you heard from Kevin, the changes there were the department, I requested 30,000. Just let me Siri knock that down to 15,000 and I guess that's where it's at. I certainly would thankful for at least entertaining the position that I know we're not reviewing the wetland budget this evening, but I also requested an additional 30,000 in that budget for essentially the same position that would double and provide assistance to both departments, planning and wetlands. So you'll be able to take a look at that, I think, at a future meeting as well. And as you heard, the miscellaneous supply item, we reduced that based on current expenditures. If there's any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Here again, if it wasn't for the 15,000, that's pretty much all the increase into the into the budget. So any questions for Gary on his budget?
Yes.
Roseanne.
On the reduction to the 15,000, would this enable you to hire a part-time planner?
So that is the intent, is that coupled with the the other, I believe it would be 15,000 in the wetland budget, that would be approximately 30,000 that are available to to hire a part-time employee. At least at an interim basis, it does not include benefits or anything like that. So I'd have to sit down and revise those numbers to do so. There, you know, there's a number of possibilities here, working with other departments and co-mingling additional funds to create a GIS position that I believe public works and water sewer and the whole town could benefit from. So we're working on that as finding the funds to do that within the budget that we have.
So at the 15,000, about how many hours of work would that equate to?
So last year's budget, we were given 10, we were putting $10,000 in the wetland budget. That's essentially brought, I've had two interns, Ally Christensen and Sam Geary, who've been, Sam's been doing about 20 hours a week and Ally's been doing five remotely, and that's money has kind of carried us from about end of November, maybe September, no, I'd probably say October, somewhere in that arena, to the present day. So and we're just about out of money there. So I would say that would give me another month in terms of hours. That's. Say that's probably somewhere around, you know, 200 to 300 hours.
Now, these were interns.
Currently being paid minimum wage at 14 dollars an hour.
Okay. So if we are using interns or this is a part-time employee, we would not be paying benefits?
Correct. We currently don't pay benefits.
Well, with this new request, we still would not be paying.
Correct.
Okay, so no benefit package. Thank you.
Other questions for Gary? Okay, thank you, Gary. Moving on, next one would be the 104 Building Department, Skarside. Dave, if you'd like to go through this?
As you can see, the salary increase from myself, I think we, for the building official position, where we have two part-timers, then the administrative and clerical is actually gone up, it was about nine, 10%. Longevity is still the same. We took a cut, right, Kev, in some of the training?
A little bit in the training.
Training, yeah.
Yeah. That should be, yeah, 500 should be training.
Right.
And we're basing that on previous expenditures and previous experiences.
Exactly, yeah. And the miscellaneous supplies is is holding at 3,000. Really no changes through the year, years.
So anyway, too, and one of the things Dave has been put out is once we act on the the building permit changes and increases in building fees, there'll be some revenue to more than offset the cost of any increases we have here. So any questions for Dave on the building side?
Yes, this is your first time around for budget hearings for this town?
Yes.
And this is the first time you've really had a chance to look at the budget?
Yes.
As it exists?
Yes.
And what is your overall feeling on this?
My feeling is like a month and a half into the job, so it looks like it's an adequate budget based on my previous experiences. So and again, in coming years, I will sit down and give you a little bit better and detailed analysis of what we need and what we, if we can get more, if you would, some of the expenditures to get online permitting in place, scanning the documents, so, you know, we'll work through it and find it out if we get time to. And with any proposal that we give, we give the justifications, so.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for Dave?
Yes.
Yeah.
Dave, thanks. So just a question on longevity, line 316.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that that, so you're requesting the 800, the selectman, I guess first selectman proposed 400, if I have the remotes today here.
Yeah, that, yeah.
So was that a correction of something?
That's because, that's the, because we're down to one person now with longevity vice two. That's very recent.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
And while talking about that, we also noticed overtime was cut in half from 1,570. Last year, we spent 34 dollars. So there was one hour of overtime. So we've we reduced that. We still put something there because there's a new admin, we're not quite sure, so we cut that in half, but, you know, we spent 34 bucks last year, so 750 sounds like a good number to start this year.
Yeah, we decided, you know, we were going to use basically past experiences with overtime and so forth like that, so.
And then the only other one I would mention is the permit refunds you see there. Our accounting software doesn't allow for netting of refunds with the revenues, so we have to budget for the refunds. So that's why you see that that 1,500 there. And when Kevin and I reviewed the lines, I don't think, Kev, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it was ever over 1,000 dollars.
No.
So that's why we cut it back to 1,000 bucks.
A refund?
For refunds. So if there's an, you know, an error, the person rescinds the the application or something like that, they get their money back after, you know, within a certain timeframe. Is that all right?
Yeah.
That's that's how I interpret it, so that's what I know.
And we give 80% back. We don't give the full amount.
80%?
80% back.
Like that even better?
It's not a full, full bill.
And then I did notice that, so that you have a net budget numbers, well, you have a building department total, but that the net would include the building permit.
Right, which will have a better idea, because what we're going to do is put an estimate in that once we take action on that next week, or probably have that built into the budget by next week.
So right now, I just want to show everybody, we have that in there as placeholders for that.
Which people at home?
Grab the signs, the flags in the way.
Yeah, that's really tough. It's tiny.
I can zoom in.
There's no way.
So building permit fees were coming in, so so Dave and I had some conversations, we've done some calculations and looked at it, and so we've come up with 500,000 dollars. And then historically, over the last 10-year look back, because we have a 10-year work paper, over the last 10 years, we've averaged 450,000 dollars. So with the increase, the proposed increased fees, we, you know, 500,000 we thought was was doable.
Real comfortable number.
Yeah, and we, the reality is it'll probably be higher than that, but we don't want to.
We don't want to overshoot.
We don't want to overshoot that, so that'll.
Well, this, yeah, your revenue number is will always be somewhat in flux, you know, up, down, the same whatever, but that's the only reason I asked it, because I just didn't see it, but because in other departments where it's more stable by grants and so forth, we see it. But that's fine, that's, thanks.
Yeah, one question on 212 Building Official. It looks, I just want to make sure I have this clear. The adopted budget for 2023 was 75,000, and then the amended was 70,000 and change?
That was because of the fact that we had basically moved, we had the interim building officials, so we had less people. We only had the one person really drawing on that line there. So we reduced that in the event we hired during the course of the year a full-time like we did with Dave, is we got him just within the last, right after the first of the year. So that's why we reduced that last year, and we're just bringing it back up to where it was in 2023, adopted vice amended.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Because the plan, because Ed Skarpatty will still be here, as will Red, the two assistants to help Dave out, so.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dave? Dave, thank you, and thank you for.
Very good.
Have a great evening.
Yeah, we will. Mr. Mahalan.
Actually, Ann Thurlow, zoning chair.
Okay, I, I, okay.
That we passed our budget last week and we have it here to go over. However, I am following the time-honored tradition of having Mr. Mahalan go over.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
Good morning, good afternoon, I guess I should say. Our budget is rather simple and pretty lean. As you can see on the line item, most of it is salary. We have longevity, which that number is really dictated by the town. Our recording secretary, that's monies to pay our clerk, that takes the commission minutes. Profession conventions, et cetera, it's a pretty lean number, consultants. We used to have a couple thousand there, we've taken that out over over the years. Transportation allowance, obviously to for myself, printing 100 dollars, and that's because we're required to have a zoning regulation that's actually available in print to the public as opposed to online. Miscellaneous supplies, pencils, papers, pads, all those types of things, still pretty lean. We haven't upped that at all. And you can see we run a pretty lean budget. I'll also add that this is the zoning commission's budget, but in addition, the zoning commission doubles as the Aqua Protection Agency. So when they operate in that capacity, they are a separate board with the same members on their staff. I've had to be trained for Aquifer. It's a finite program essentially dictated by DEP, and it doesn't provide for a lot of latitude, so that, we don't have a separate budget for that, it essentially rides on this budget, and we meet as necessary, a minimum of about six times a year, so that also occurs. And in addition, Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if you wanted me to touch on ZBA or another time.
That'd be another time too, because that's very easy to go through, that's, yes.
Yeah, it's minimal as well. So we do a lot with very little, and of course, we're busy this year, we have the spring pushes recently started, so activity's picking up. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'd like to go to line 243, the consultants, and I noticed that it was zero in 2002, 2003, The commission does not, with all of this development that's going on and proposals, there isn't any need for consultants?
In previous administrations, we've had, I think, and I haven't looked at the history, but as much as 2 to 4,000 dollars in that account, which was taken out by previous administrations. But it's our understanding that funds are available if we need a consultant. One of the issues that we run into if we have a public hearing on a big development, and we think, for example, we need a traffic consultant, by the time I go and hire one and interview one and we agree to a price, my deadlines, based on statutory limitations on timelines, is passed. So it's a very difficult thing to do in the business, in the zoning business, we typically rely on the applicant's consultants, and we get to cross-examine them, even while they're paid by them, and most of them are licensed, so they're going to be pretty candid with their testimony, so it's up to us to really cross-examine and try to pull information out to put into our record for the commission to make a decision.
And if you were concerned about the testimony that was being presented, would you have access to town council?
We have access to town council. We, from time to time, talk to them as necessary. Having been doing this quite a bit, I need him less than I normally, than somebody else would normally, but I still need access to him from time to time. The zoning business and land use business has become extremely litigious and very complex, and you need to stay up with the business today. It's a lot of liability in it, as you all understand. And yes, we do sometimes question some of our testimony, obviously being paid by an applicant as opposed to being our person. There is a possibility of us requiring them to hire a person of our choice working for us and have them pay. There's some new language in the state statutes which we're looking at to see if we can do that, so that it's not a necessity for the town to carry the expense, but the applicant, because he's the catalyst for the activity, so he should carry that expense as opposed to the taxpayer and and the town. So we're going to look at that and see if that's something we can pull into our system.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Bill?
Yes, line 246 talks about transportation allowance, it's 750 dollars.
Yeah, I use my car. We don't have a vehicle in zoning, we don't have a town vehicle, so that covers that. And to be candid, sometimes it's more effort to put it in or not, if you're running down the street and running back, takes more time to do the paperwork then. So it it kind of goes like this over time. You know, you're running three miles, you know, and you get back, the phone's ringing, there's three people waiting for you, you don't have time to write all that down. And then when we have a little bit of access to town vehicles now, I know Gary and I sometimes will go together on something if we have equal responsibility to look at at a project or something. So we've kind of figured that out and tried to making that work. I mean, in an ideal world, zoning would have its own vehicle, and I think that's something you're going to need to do in the future. The world is becoming more dangerous, we go out sometimes by ourselves, we don't know what we're getting into, and to go in a private vehicle today, I don't know about you, but I don't want somebody pulling up in my driveway that I don't know and doesn't have, you know, I may have a badge on my neck, an ID, but there's nothing on the vehicle identifying who you are. And we're very careful, because sometimes you knock on a door and maybe somebody's young, older, young children at home, well, that's when we leave, we ask for the adults if they're out there, we have to leave, you don't want to be there, because it can create an unusual situation, you're going to want to have a witness. There's a lot of techniques that we have to use to ensure everybody's comfortable. So in the future, I would suspect we'll be looking for one.
Do you usually make appointments with people before you show up at their door?
If we, it depends on the activity. The answer is yes, as necessary. Other times, when you have violations, we do drive-by things, and we take photographs, and we use those, that evidence in court. When you're before the judge, as some of you will know, photographs worth 1,000, whereas you're sitting in a witness stand and the judge asks you that question, well, you're right, I just happen to have some photographs. And when they look at the photographs, the message becomes very clear, and, you know, if you have a real sort of inappropriate use next to your property, it becomes readily evident based on a photograph. So those are helpful, so a lot of techniques in the toolbox.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I've got one other thing. Now, we do have a blight enforcement officer, but where is that person's budget? Is that under you?
I, you're looking at it.
Right there.
I do that as well.
We have somebody else's name on the list. Well, perhaps that person is no longer active.
It it has from, from my understanding, because when we wrote it, I was part of part of the the right of that that document, and we use it as a tool. One of the issues with it actually as a tool is it's very cumbersome to use, and there are other tools in the zoning regs that require less effort, less money, less involvement. We use it when we really need it. I think the good news is, we haven't needed it very much, but it's there as a tool if needed, and it's good to have it on the books, but it hasn't really, it's not a full-time activity. And often, we'll use a zoning regulation that covers a similar thing, and it's much more expeditious to use that as opposed to the blight ordinance. We kind of use that as a as a means of last resort. If a property's that bad, we're going to use that. And we do have a few around town, I'd be surprised.
No, I wouldn't be. I drive around town every weekend.
There's a few.
Thank you.
So we do that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Moving on, registrars. Kevin sat down because we had to make sure we had, you know, better way to explain a lot of their expenses here too, you know, and here again, the problems of coming up for them, the fact that, you know, referendum and the expense of that and all that, so we'll let them walk through it. So let's start with page, you don't want to start with this page, but.
Right, with the jump in referendum, we're actually going from the bottom up, the referendum in primary this year is obviously going to be the presidential primary. That is essentially eight voting districts, so when you have your three polls in your apps and your EDR, you're, which is supposed to come along this year, never mind the early voting, we have a significant jump in that. With our election day expenses, this year's ballot is a municipal ballot, which holds 39 places in it. For that ballot alone to be programmed, that's 35 dollars each block to get programmed, so you're looking at 1,000 dollars just to program it, never mind purchasing the ballot, which is a two-side ballot. So when we have municipals, our ballots are higher than when we have a presidential election. Only other thing that's changed possibly would be what went down from voter canvas and went into postage. We sent out 500 letters this past week, which had confirmation of voter registration, which is required for us to do every year. Professional conventions and conferences, that's a requirement by the state of Connecticut for us to keep our certification and our continuing education courses. Those are five days a year, and we take our deputies with us, and our deputies, should something happen to us, need to be able to step in for us, so that's why we need that item. You good?
Yeah, none of, none of this involves any potential expenses incurred, because we, the early voting bills have come out and they want us to implement this this year. We have been told that we will be getting state money to do that.
We've been told that before, too.
Right, well, yeah, exactly.
Well, we start with a little bit and then it goes away.
The check will be in the mail.
But we can only, we're dictated by the Secretary of State's office. We are told what we do. We, you know, we get our marching orders, and if they come back with, there's 14 days of early voting at eight hours a day where you have to have two staff there, that's what we have to do. I mean, there's no play when they say, this is what you're doing, and there's 169 towns that they want it to be unified. So we're holding our breath because that's going to come out next month, but as we stand right now, this is our budget.
Okay, questions?
Yes, on the charter revision commission that's meeting now, is the town vote going to be sufficient to be done at town meeting, or is that going to have to be by ballot?
It'll be by ballot.
And can that take place at the same time as the regular?
Yes, it, yes, it will.
Yes.
Okay, so that expense is covered there. I'm curious as to how you determine whether or not a person is a citizen in order to be able to vote. Now that the state has given licenses to people who are not citizens, how is that?
They signed a perjury statement that if they they swear that they are a citizen, if they're not, then we find out, they can be fined and or imprisoned up to six months, but we don't have to investigate that, we could suspect.
The licenses are also different. They issue a license to non-citizens. The licenses are also different. They issue a license to non-citizens, but we can't register them. Our system won't allow us to register them, because they are marked as non-citizens. So it does differentiate between citizens and non-citizens, I believe at the DMV level. So, yeah, we don't register non-citizens.
But that's requiring DMV system to catch it.
And it usually does.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for our registrars?
Questions about voter rolls and when, at what time, or ahead of an election, or just generally, how are you, how do you purge the rolls? How do you, you know, when does that take place?
Now, basically.
And all year long as well.
And all year long. That's what our canvas is. Every year, we get notifications from the NCOA, the National Change of Address. We have Rose, which is an in-state thing. We, anybody who's moved within town, who has moved out of town, we send them letters. People who haven't voted in two previous federal elections, we get a list. We do some research, see if we can find them, make sure they're in town. If we can't find them, we send them a letter. If the letter bounces back from the post office, we assume they've moved. They go on an inactive list. If we hear nothing from them, they go on our inactive list. They send their letter back and say, "I have moved out of town." They go off throughout the year.
We look at the tax rolls, too. A lot of times, you'll find the same name at an address. And you say, "Okay, this fellow was born in '90. Okay, is he still at college?" You know, whatever. So then we'll look, instead of, it's very expensive to send a letter out at $0.60 to mail it. It's $0.60 to get it back, and then we used to have to have a postcard come back, which was another $0.70. So you're looking at, you know, generating that $2 letter. So if I see that John lives at home and the parents are paying taxes, we go, "All right, he's in college," you know. Otherwise, to track down all 13,000 voters, that's going to be quite cost-effective. So we do a little bit, we take this time during January and February to investigate. We'll look at what homes were sold on the real estate. We also get that from the assessor's office. So we kind of meld our own list, come up with what's most likely moves, and also, you're required to send it to each individual in the home. So it's not like you can just send to the Smith family. And it does, like I say, we've cut out that one step of returning the postcard, so we'll see that go down in tracking voters down. But this year is the first time that we've been able to do that. So only 500 and...
574.
Went out, letters went out yesterday.
Also, yes, we actually do work all year round. We don't show up just a couple days a year. But every day on our CBRS system, we get tumbleweed, and that's the DMV notifying us. If someone within town that was within town has moved out of town and registered in a different town, it notifies us, and that's how we take them off. We also get the obituaries, we read the obituaries, we get the death list.
From the town clerk's office.
From the town clerks.
Yeah, there's not many on the list.
So in addition to it being ongoing activity and responsibility of the job, it's also tailored for an upcoming election, it sounds like, you know, for your...
We're required to do the canvas per statute every year, yes.
And how about the maintenance of your equipment? Is that also, is that something that you do ahead of the election? Or you do it as necessary?
Yeah, it's, we have a maintenance agreement with our computer company. And he'll come out in July and check out our tabulators. And then when we set up our tabulators prior to election, they're, you know, if there's tape not running or something seems like the ballot is wiggly or hinky, as some people say.
Janky.
Janky, yeah. That, we call them and they come, and we pay $1,750 a year for that agreement. And our machines are very old, and we hope the state comes up with some.
Well, that's what I was going to mention, too. I know that there's a plan that, especially with the early voting, the state is aware of the fact that, I think, Wendy, you may have talked to me about that within the last couple of days, or Holly may have talked to me about it, that they realize that, you know, our tabulators are very old, and the state's going to have to step in and give some help to that.
Yes, that's further down the line. The way the early voting bill is written right now takes into account our current level of, or lack thereof, of technology. In the future, there, we have been pushing electronic poll books, better tabulators, but the way the early voting bill has been written, it's run very similar to the way we do election day registration. And it's going to require more physical labor on our part, but it is what it is.
We did have our security cyber evaluation on today as well. And we did pretty good. We need to put in two cameras by the doors, just so we can see if anybody's coming in. We, keys are under control. So, you know, we keep up with all of that stuff, too. Like I say, as it comes down from the Secretary of State's office, we basically follow up on what they're rolling out.
And we need laptops.
Okay. And ice cream.
And ice cream.
I owe you from last year, I know. All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Dan, if you'd like to come up, Dan will make his, like so many department heads have shared, it's your first budget presentation for IT. All right, it's all up to you, Dan, so if you'd like to go through it, go ahead.
Sure. So just a sort of a general overview. So the budget has been, looking back a little bit, it's been more of a maintenance-type budget, so kind of keep things running and that sort of thing. So we're using, Tom is using an outside consultant for a lot of the day-to-day operations, as well as, you know, projects that came up and maintenance that came up, as far as that goes. With this budget, some of the changes that you'll see is a reduction in outside consulting services to assist the town. So bringing back inside.
Can you point out which line that is, so they can...
Sure. So we have, that is line 217 is one of the lines there. So that's the technical assistance for the town. That number has dropped with the addition of myself. Able to bring most of the day-to-day operations and maintenance back in-house between myself and Carmen. So we're requiring less and less consulting services for the day-to-day operations. And for this year, we've reduced the number of hours significantly to meet kind of a budget shortfall that it came into, that just happened for a number of reasons, to get us to the end of the year. And that way, next year, there's still budgeted hours for consulting that we hope to use for more specialized tasks and project, project work, where we need an extra set of hands or a specialization. But the day-to-day and forward planning things will be done within Town IT. Another, another addition will be in the training line, which is under, let's see, Other Services, Other IT Services, Town, 218. And that includes training for, specific IT training for, within the IT department. But it also includes information security training for the entirety of the town. So the town, entirety of the town workforce, so the town employees. So that'll go towards, you know, phishing, security, information, security training full, across the board for everyone to incorporate, just going forward, more emphasis on training in future growth. So this, it's, my idea is to sort of move beyond the maintenance, just the bare maintenance budget into a more forward and growth budget for what we have. But I think generally, we stayed pretty well within the lines.
Questions for Dan?
Yes, what kind of collaboration do you do with the Board of Education and their computer programs?
So we don't, there's really not a lot of cross-talk that I'm aware of. I've met with, I'm sorry, I haven't met with anyone from the Board of Ed yet. They're kind of their, their own separate island, as far as I, as far as it's been presented to me.
So they're operating under a totally different system?
They may be similar systems, but nothing that I have any awareness of.
Other questions?
I've got one.
Sure.
On the GIS Annual Licensing and Hosting, I see that went up, oh, 40%, is that right? Is that just due to their increase in their fees, or did we expand the service?
So that, that increase is going to cover the backend requirements for the scanning, scanning portion of their budget that got put forth. So that's the requirements on the IT end to support their implementation of document scanning.
I see. So it won't necessarily keep going up that much every year?
No, no. So this is, I mean, that will likely stay, that number will likely stay, but it is also contingent on the scanning portion of their budget going through and being implemented.
So they're, so because they're doing the scanning during this phase, that's increased. That was the reason for that.
Yeah, so that, all that has to go somewhere here, so we...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is that 219 or 220?
It's...
219.
219.
219.
Yeah, one thing Dan pointed out that, you know, we were paying the consultant basically to be on call for us. And as Dan said, if there's a call at 2:00 in the morning that needs to be made, he's the one that needs to go to. And then, you know, from there, and work the problem from there. So, you know, we've noticed a lot of efficiency since we've brought Dan on. And, you know, Carmen, between the two of them, they've turned into really fantastic, I mean, it's just a great team. I mean, all I ever hear is compliments on both of them as far as, you know, how things are going and so forth like that. And I forwarded Dan something the other, I think on the weekend. I said, "I just got this," and Francis was, "Delete it now." Okay, I understand what that means, because, you know, I didn't even open it once I saw it. So, anyway, other questions?
Yeah, if you could just explain item 221, it says Police ANDFMO IT Support.
Sure. So that's a, that's a breakdown, do we have a breakdown? Is that Kevin?
Excuse me, what was something?
I have it. There's a, there's a breakdown on, at the back of the...
In the explanation. Yeah, but that's not...
I know, if you keep going to the very back, it should be right.
I guess it's, it's on the same page where there's a breakdown of start contract at the bottom of that page. So it's about four pages into your, to this department's budget.
Basically, the last, it's the last page.
Basically, yeah, last page.
So what that page consists of is the, all the IT support and services required by the police department were pulled in to, have been pulled into the IT budget. This was previous to me being here, to try and consolidate, so we can see, you know, get a higher level view of where the IT money is being spent. And this is all, again, support and licensing, internet connections, things like that. Everything that the police use for their day-to-day operations. So it's in support of that. Most of them are maintenance contracts, some of which change slightly, up and down a little bit. But for the most part, they stayed fairly steady. I think there was a slight overall increase in percentages, but not, nothing inconsistent with general support increases.
So everything from the town, then, is under your umbrella now, besides, like, the Board of Ed? And all the town departments, the police, everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's still, there's still some departments that have a few outlined IT pieces to their budget, but the idea is to bring it all into one budget.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Dan.
Thank you.
And just to say, you should have this page, it should be the last page of the IT section.
Oh, yeah, no, I cannot see that, though.
I do have one other question. Sorry, because I don't know what it means. This is under Other IT Services, Dark Fiber Service. What is that?
Which page you are?
Other IT, 218.
Other IT Service.
So that's a, that's a private connection that, so that's a, it's an internet connection, but it's private to the town, and that's to link two of our buildings together. So it currently links the town hall to the old dispatch, where all the dispatch equipment is, the old firehouse dispatch center. And what we utilize that line for is we take all of the data that we have here, and we use that connection to send it over there, so that we have a copy of that data in a disparate location in the town hall. So if something were to happen to the town hall, or if something were to happen to the equipment in the town hall, ransomware, things like that, we have a copy in a different location, you know, for weather, for ransomware attacks, for cybersecurity, and just general backups.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, that was a really good description, too, of that backup that we need. So I think you, that was really good. Really good question.
Thank you much.
Okay, we can do that if you'd like. Sure, it's always up there.
What line are we talking about?
So we're capitalizing on the general portion, capital area of the top section, general government.
What number, I guess?
Is this the town-wide computer replacement? Okay, if you want to go to, all the way to the back, also, CIP.
So very top, that's SIP. So if you go to SIP.
Oh, got it, okay.
And the first, the first, basically, basically the first page of that.
Can you get it open, Kevin? Okay. Yeah, and that, that's our normal, there's nothing abnormal about that.
Yeah, I can, I can give it, there's only two, there's two items in that. So there's a, there's a line item for PC replacements. So the town utilizes a rolling replacement of workstations, which brings us right now, currently replacing approximately, with the increase in cost, over the last few years, that number hasn't gone up, but the cost of PCs has gone up. So we haven't been replacing at the rate that we needed to be at. So, for instance, this year, we're replacing approximately 8% to 10% of PCs in our pool. If we continued at that rate, it would be 10 years before all the machines were replaced. And the, keeping it, stretching the life of a machine and the software on the machine is generally pushing five years. So bringing that budget up to $20,000 enables us to get that replacement rate to about 20% a year and keep us at a five-year rotation of the equipment more regularly. So it's more of a forward, to catch up in the forward planning, to keep our equipment up to date. The other line item, that you'll see, the larger line item, I believe it's 60,000. Oh, you have it up there.
So the total project, I believe, was 61,000 and some change. So they have currently already approved in the Capital Now Recurring Fund, 27,000 and some change. So this is the remainder of that. And I believe I might even have a note, if we're lucky. You can't see that? Yeah, we have 25K in CNRE, project estimated between 57 and 65K. So this is just to give us the second half of the funds to buy new servers.
Yeah, and to speak to that, so that, that would include, it's the same along the lines of the PC replacements. The servers, we generally try to keep to a seven to 10-year, 10 years is pushing it lifecycle on the servers. They're in their eighth year now. So by the time we get replacements in, we'll be in year nine of those servers. So it's about time for the server replacements. But also included in that replacement is, is what we call, is increased capacity for more data, because the data, our data sets keep growing. In addition to that, is increased backups to support the increased data, so to make sure that all of our data is protected. In addition to that is increased backups to support the increased data, so to make sure that all of our data is protected and safe. And in addition to that, there is what's called, it's another form of backup, it's called an air gap backup. And a very simple explanation of that is, if you hear about ransomware or any of these attacks, when they get in and they get to the data, they corrupt the data, they encrypt the data, you lose access to it. So you have to go to your backups. In about 60% of those instances, the backups also suffered the same fate as the original data, so you don't have backups. So an air gap backup is a backup that's taken and then taken offline so that it's not connected to anything else that might get attacked, right? So, and those are rotated. It used to be in like a tape format, you know, you do backup tapes, now it's in disk format. Same idea, but it's an offline backup that we have in the absolute case of emergency, we can go back to. So that's all included underneath that, that budget item up.
And how often does that backup occur?
So we do full backups nightly.
I just want to say, I'm really pleased that our, our townwide email that we as board members use, I've noticed a difference that we're not seeing, I'm not seeing phishing emails as I was seeing for a stretch of time before your arrival.
Yeah, there's been some, there's been some background work on, and people reporting. So the more that they get reported, they just get added into our system, and they use algorithms and heuristics to try and help keep those from coming in. They still do come in, and it's, that's our, our biggest area of exposure is email to town employees. And that's why the, the training is in there in relation to that. So that's why, a very important piece that we added this year.
We still get, since I do, a number of solicitations that look very, you know, the phishing ones are very obvious, you know, with the solicitations that, you know, you don't know if they're legitimate company or not, and so, yeah, I don't open them, but...
Yeah.
About just...
What I do sometimes, never hesitate to forward it to either Carmen or Dan. If it, and they can tell you, no, stay away from it, or okay, if it's a question, because that's, I do that frequently, because I get tons of emails, you know, so I just try to...
Just delete them.
Yeah, and just delete them.
One less thing to arrange.
But I have noticed this improvement.
Yeah, and, because if we know about it, we can add it, and it, it does help to tick those down a little bit.
Thank you.
So can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Tomorrow, Dan and I have a call with Carma, our insurance company, to go over cybersecurity and the pricing for that. So that's not in the budget yet, but if we get a number tomorrow, we'll, we'll keep you guys informed.
Thank you.
So...
Good idea. Okay, thank you.
Definitely, definitely very needed.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, and STAR has, was a great, great resource for us, no question about it. But I think Dan and Carmen have showed us the value of having people dedicated, and, you know, this, this is their only job.
And STAR is, STAR is a great, is a great resource for us to have on tap. I think, you know, we just, our efficient, more efficient use of that time.
Exactly, I agree, so, thank you guys.
I have one question. On the capital improvement plan, on the replacement of the townwide servers?
Yes.
I've noticed, as I replace computers, they don't make any noise anymore. There doesn't seem to be any moving parts inside the box. Is that true of the larger servers?
So the, the servers are very similar, so they'll be, they'll all be SSD drives, so no spinning disks anymore. It's all solid-state drives, yeah.
Does that increase longevity?
It does, it does, it increases longevity, and it also increases the, it increases the risk, or, I'm sorry, reduces the risk of failure over time.
Yeah.
What comes into the replacement is not only the hardware cost, which is, is a big portion of it, it's also the software cost. So if, if we're getting to the point now, if we kept these servers that we currently have, we would be looking at upgrading the software to the next version to stay up to, with all the security updates and all the feature updates that we need. And that would be a 15 to $20,000 investment into very old equipment. So we sort of align the hardware and the software together to kind of keep that, to keep them fresh at the same rate, right?
Yeah.
So that we, we keep the software up to date and secure, and we, we keep the machines running.
I appreciate that explanation, thank you.
That works.
Thank you.
I'm glad I still get my typewriter. No maintenance.
Yes. Thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Moving on, chief.
Hello, hello, hello.
And welcome Lieutenant Maisick and Commissioner, how are you doing this evening? Hitchery, Commissioner Hitchery.
So thank you for having us. Again, you know, we always have great support by the Board of Selectmen, and we're thankful for that. And certainly, I look forward to presenting this to you and any questions you may have. With me is Lieutenant Maisick, as well as Commissioner Regina Hitchery. Thank you, that's perfect. Understanding that the police budget, dispatch budget, ACO budget are all approved by the Police Commission. So several months ago, presented to that body, that body reviews it, and then ultimately approves the mission and tasks that we're moving forward with. So what you see tonight is really the product of their work, including work several years ago to look at a staffing study, which, you know, has been discussed with, I think, all of you in the past, but certainly will come back up tonight. So a little bit about, oh, all right, let's go back. Can you cycle back?
Previous. Second, second one.
All right, get back. So a little bit about the police department. I think, you know, just standing up here and just saying this is what we need or what we want in a budget is lacking if I don't explain what the police department has done over the past year and what the department is. So, part of the mission statement, Eastline Police Department is to serve the public in a professional manner. We take on the responsibility of making our community safe for all those that live, work, or pass through our community. We strive to make our roads safe for motorists and pedestrians alike. It is our responsibility to work with other agencies and with the public we serve and treat everyone with respect and dignity. Our core values, our respect for all persons, both in and outside the organization. We will inspire respect and confidence in the public trust by performing all duties impartially and respecting the dignity of all citizens and fellow employees. Strive for excellence in all our activities. We value professionalism and a team effort to provide effective public safety services. Provide a high level of customer service at all times. We will work cooperatively with other towns, state, federal agencies, and citizens organizations to provide the highest level of service to our residents, businesses, and visitors. We will seek the highest level of ethical and moral conduct in our on-duty and off-duty activities. We also subscribe to the six pillars of 21st century policing. This has been in place or came from a blue-ribbon committee commissioned back when President Obama was in office to look at policing and moving policing forward with some of the principles. And you will see them throughout everything that we do as an organization administratively, all the way through what services you're receiving on the street. But building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, and officer wellness and safety. So looking at those six pillars to say, this is what the cornerstone of our agency is, and any good police agency is going to have those as they're moving forward with everything that they do. So what we do, provide police services to the residents and visitors of the town of Eastline. Dispatch Center handles all 911 calls originating within the town of Eastline, provides dispatching for Eastline Police Department, Flanders Fire Department, Nyanac Fire Department, Eastline Ambulance. It also provides monitoring dispatch services for the Eastline Water and Sewer Departments, and provides control for Channel 22 services. So everyone who's watching right now, that's through dispatch. Eastline Waterford Animal Control Division provides animal control services for the towns of Eastline and Waterford. Understanding that last week you were presented with those budgets, but certainly any questions you may have thought over the past week relating to those two, certainly we can get discussed tonight as well. So a little bit about the police department, responsible for maintaining the safety and security of all residents and visitors of the town of Eastline. Currently, the resident population is 18,693. This does not include the visitors to the town's many beaches, shops, parks, who significantly add to the town's population and traffic. We know that, we know that a lot of people come to the town of Eastline, and more and more people are going to be coming to the town of Eastline because of the wonderful place that it is. But certainly, all of that has an impact on the jobs that we do as police officers, as well as our, you know, partners in the fire, EMS, public works, and all those other departments. Current staffing, we're at 28 full-time officers. We have a minimum patrol of one sergeant and two patrol officers. That same minimum patrol has been in place for decades. Responsible for 34 square miles of land, and as well as coastline and waterways along the Nyanac River, as well as Long Island Sound. Staffing, we're at 1.84 staff per thousand population, which is now the 10th lowest in the state. Last year, it was fifth at the last study that was done. So we are still extremely low, and I'll get to that more in a second. The Connecticut State staffing rate, so all the police departments combined in the state, is at 2.51. That does include all police personnel, so it's police dispatch, support personnel, and animal control inside of departments. So it really compares every single town and what they are providing for that public safety. Just a little bit of a comparable, because I think, you know, when we talk about police departments and how many officers you have, there's a lot of things that factor into that. So kind of looking across the board here to some comparable communities along the shoreline, looking at Old Saybrook, Stonington, and Waterford, you can see the number of officers, 28 in Eastline, 25 in Old Saybrook, 39 in Stonington, 49 in, in Waterford. And then you look, and again, this is not a complete apples-to-apples comparison, because some towns do budget slightly different. So some police department budgets will have their maintenance of vehicles in there, some may have fringe benefits for their, their employees, some may have capital items inside of there. So it is not an apples-to-apples. But to kind of give you a ballpark of where we stand and what the police budget is compared to Old Saybrook, Stonington, and Waterford, as you can see up there. Populations of the towns, we are very comparable, we're slightly above Stonington, slightly below Waterford, and we are 8,000 plus more than Old Saybrook. And then you look at the staffing, when we talked about the 1.84, just for your own knowledge, you compare Old Saybrook is at 3.3, Stonington is at 2.8, and Waterford at 3.19. Now, understanding, not everything is comparable, but I think also it's always very, very important to understand when we're looking at the task of law enforcement and what police departments do, and what we are able to do with the resources we have, we need to look around us to see what other departments are doing, how they do it, and what kind of staff they're provided to perform those tasks. Our staffing profile, we have 28 full-time officers, as I said. Currently, we have two that are actively in the police academy at this point. They will not be on patrol on their own until approximately December. They will graduate in July, and their FTO program will take over, and that is a several-month, you know, 400-plus-hour program. When you look at the breakdown of our department, we are not top-heavy, we have a chief, we have two lieutenants who function amazingly in our department to do a wonderful job. Six sergeants, which covers a sergeant on every shift. Two detectives, one federal task force officer, one school resource officer, 15 patrol officers, one part-time officer. In the dispatch side, we have eight full-time dispatchers, four active part-time dispatchers, and the two full-time ACOs, and two full-time support, or, excuse me, two support personnel, one of them full-time, one a 25-hour position. So what are some of our statistics? In 2022, we had 16,167 calls for service. That encompasses everything, anything that somebody would call the police to respond to, to deal with, to venture into, that counts in, in those numbers. 1,654 motor vehicle stops, 245 traffic accidents, 189 pieces of evidence were logged into the evidence room and maintained through that evidence room. 319 arrests, important to note, that's a 32% increase in 2022 over 21, and 21 over 20 was a 28% increase. So we have increased drastically since 2019 to 2022, as far as those statistics. Another important piece is when we're talking about police departments, how they function, how they serve their community, is force. You'll see, we've only used four, we had four uses of force out of 319 arrests. Two of those were physical, because in the state of Connecticut, if you do a felony stop, you draw your weapon out of a vehicle, that's considered a use of force and has to be documented as such. So think about that, at 319 arrests, only two times physically we had to fight with somebody or, or taser somebody or something similar to that. So amazing skills by our officers in de-escalating situations, handling situations in the best way possible, and not resorting to force. Certainly, force is used if we need it, but it is absolutely not the first and foremost thing that happens. So I think that speaks volumes to the level of officers that we have in this town. 58.7% increase in criminal investigations in 22 over 21. And again, just like arrests, 20 to 21 saw a 34.7% increase. What those are, are criminal investigations that have to take place, that's time. That's officers having to spend time to do criminal investigations, write reports. It isn't simply going to somebody's home, somebody's business, having a conversation and leaving because they've solved the problem. It's actually an in-depth report that they have to write, investigations, follow-up, and so forth. So the time officers are spending on cases is far, far, you know, increased over the past two years especially. A lot of time with arrests, a lot of time with those criminal investigations, which are becoming more and more complex. Our clearance rate, which I think is extremely important, when we talk about the quality of our officers, our clearance rate is at 43.04%. The state average is 30%. So our officers are clearing cases at a 13% higher rate than the rest of the state of Connecticut, which, you know, I can't say enough of the quality we have of officers, the hard work they do, and doing more with less, because our staffing is extremely low, but the officers are still out there on a day, day-in, day-out, night basis, working very hard to try to do the mission that they're, they're paid to do. So I think that's very important to recognize and acknowledge that with the officers. What are the arrests for? This is always a question that comes up in 2022. 31 were for assault, 54 were for breach and disorderly conduct, 65 for DUI, and that is ever-increasing quickly. FTAs are 46, drug arrests were 55, larcenies 37, violation of probation 13, and violation of protective orders were at 17. Highlights, and this, to try to put this onto one slide and not take up all of your night and spend two hours doing this, you know, I could go on and on about our highlights, but important things to note. Axon body cameras have been in place for two years in our agency. In 2022, just so you have a frame of reference in this, because IT is such a huge piece, and, you know, to go to Ann's question about the police line in there, one of them is our body cameras. One of them is the maintenance, the storage of our evidence on evidence.com. We have 20,156 videos that were uploaded. It's a lot of, lot of data that's being uploaded into our cloud server. So it's, it's so important that we have that service and we maintain that, because it's a lot of work our officers are doing. That's body cameras, in-car cameras, and that does not include our building cameras in that server that takes, you know, care of that. So certainly, there's a whole lot of video that's taking place. Power DMS, which is another technology piece, it is utilized for all our policies, it is utilized with the police academy. So I will tell you that we are now ready for our tier, tier-one accreditation, which is mandated by the Police Accountability Act in March, and then in April, we will get our visit. This is how they go into our policies. So the police academy is able to go into our policies, go into our systems, review everything before they come out, make sure everything is up to snuff, that we are where we need to be. We have enlisted a law firm for the past two years, which specializes just in police policies, to help us create the best policies possible, but also ones that meet that standard for accreditation, which we have to continue on through several tiers, and also the national with Kalia, as we're going through this process. Rapid SOS is in dispatch and Prepared Live. Rapid SOS is an amazing program, which is utilized where dispatcher can tell almost exactly, and sometimes tell you where in the yard or where in the house somebody is when they're calling 911. It's extremely amazing technology. Prepared Live really was kind of an offshoot of Lieutenant Maisick's adventures out on the boat when they had the gentleman that overturned the boat, and, you know, our dispatchers were very, used ingenuity to have them FaceTime. Prepared Live does that through the 911 system. So we are one of the agencies that's able to do this now, where dispatch has the ability to go into somebody's phone and see that video that they're sending you, which is crucial sometimes to getting that live information that happens at a scene. So again, technology is so key to everything that we're doing. We're migrating to an interoperable radio system, where we are going to be co-on the state system, the Waterford, New London system, as well as our own systems. This will allow us as a police department to communicate with every agency that's out there around us, which greatly enhances our abilities as a police agency, because we know there's no borders. We get into an incident that, that takes place and goes to the highway or goes into another town, we're going to have the ability, and the radios just actually came in this week and are going to be programmed by the next couple, you know, months or so, to be able to switch, switch the channel or be brought onto a channel that is shared by other agencies, so that's very important. Citizens Police Academy, this past year, we had the inaugural class for our Citizens Police Academy, very, very widely lauded. We have people that want to go out to the next class, great feedback, the people loved it. So I encourage anybody here to attend themselves, or if they know somebody who's interested in learning about law enforcement. It's a 10-week program, they met on Thursday nights, and they stayed the entire time every Thursday, and they learned a whole lot of topics about policing. And I think it was a great tool to open people's eyes, but also to get a lot of feedback from our community. our community. Participation, National Night Out, again, amazing event that I think, you know, some of you were at, took place at the, you know, Flanders School Miracle League field. Very, very, very well-attended, very great feedback. And I will tell you that as we were breaking down, we had all the great ideas for next year, for doing it, for things that we wanted to improve and change, because it was that good of an event. And also tip-a-cow for Special Olympics, holiday toy drive, sponsors for the holiday season. You'll notice the background of all my slides, our officers in our department engaged in all of these activities, because that's really the hallmark of us being part of our community and our relationship with the people we serve. Really quickly, the training, I think it's very important people understand, there is a plethora of training that we are required to undertake as police officers. And that's important, because I value training as much as anybody. If you saw that we are working with the LEC as the Regional Police Academy, this is an oral class that is now several weeks into that. I'm one of the deans of the Criminal Investigation Section. Lieutenant Masek is running the drill and formation part of it. So, you know, that is extremely important to us, that we're educating police officers the best way possible and getting them the best training and education. Now, there's a lot of mandates, and that mandate becomes important, because when you look at the budget and see what we have for training lines, it's because we have to do those things. And if you're going to go down this, I won't, you know, bore you with every single piece, but certainly, you know, you have bigotry bias, implicit bias, domestic violence, police and the law, cultural awareness, citizens of special needs, human trafficking, human relations. We don't just train our police officers to go lock up bad guys, to go put handcuffs on them, to use force. What we're training our police officers in the state of Connecticut is how to do the job that is a wide-ranging job. Because at 2:00 in the morning, there's nobody else for someone to call except for the police department. And we have to be able to handle all situations that come, that arise. And I think, again, we do a very, very good job at that. Jumping to the trainings over the past year, because this is important, because we are specializing our officers in certain areas. So investigating child sex crimes, EMT, MR, because a lot of times we're a first responder to a lot of situations that are happening. Drug recognition expert, which is huge. Officer Hannah just attended this training, which is a very, very intense national training, where he is now one of the DREs for the state of Connecticut, because DREs are important, required now for almost every type of DUI accident. You'll see Waterford had that unfortunate fatal the other night. He got called in to go to Waterford to assist them with the evaluation of the driver in that case. And, you know, Waterford has one, and we share all these individuals, but it's a huge skill that has to be out there. Accident reconstruction, same thing. We've worked in that shoreline reconstruction team with Waterford. We are partners with them, and we have reconstructionists, and they do too. It's a great shared resource. Words Matter, de-escalation training, community police relations, crisis interventions, you know, so on and so forth. The other piece was child card seat technicians. For several years, we had nobody involved in this. We hosted a training, we actually went out and found a training group to come in. We have three officers now trained. Great feedback from our community of people that now can come to our police department to have that seat inspected and installed properly by one of three officers who are trained to do that. So a great, a huge thing for our citizens in the town. So looking at our budget, where are our increases? Employee salaries, it's 2.75, the contractual increase. The additional requests for two officers, which stemmed originally from the Police Commission looking at the staffing study, looking at where we stand globally compared to other police departments, looking at the ever-increasing workload, investigation load, arrest load, because what we have to do as a police department is determine where are we putting our assets? Where are we putting people out there in the field? So certainly, that's one of the reasons for that. Overtime has been increased to meet the actual, if you recall, last year, we were, you know, as part of a cost-cutting, it was cut down. Unfortunately, this year, we had an extended period of time into the summer and into the fall, we were down five officers because of injury. That takes a toll on your overtime. These aren't discretionary, this is, I need people out on the road working, because I had three sergeants out at one point, I had two officers out, and I still have, you know, one just came back, one's still out, one sergeant's going out again. So all of this costs money to replace, because you have to have those officers out there working on the street. Foot patrol parade, we are asking for an increase for higher visibility on Main Street. Main Street is becoming extremely busy, traffic, pedestrians. One of the things that used to be a line was that walkie-beat downtown, but unfortunately, that's been kind of absorbed into some other things. I'd like to really enhance that a lot more by having more visible people on Main Street in the summer at certain times to watch crosswalks, to, you know, watch traffic, watch people that are down there, and just be a visible presence to deter any crime. Training, the tuition academy for the two new officers is added in there. Boat storage and maintenance, we've realized on the two vessels that we do have, it's increasing, just like everything else in the world, those costs have gone up to shrink-wrap the boat, to do any kind of maintenance that has to happen for it. Telephone, it's just the increase of one cellular phone, as we're looking at maybe adding an additional person in investigative arena. Law enforcement council with the LEC, they have increased their assessment, which we have no control over, that's regional, every department was raised in that. Boat fuel, as all fuel costs are going up, and I'm sure Mr. Braw will talk about that on his part, the boat fuel is increasing even more than the road fuel. So we need to be able to recognize that. Now, understanding, this is a shared asset with Waterford, so we pay for the fuel, and then they reimburse us for half of that. So that's done on a regular basis, and that has been, no problems with that. Uniforms are increased to add the cost of the two new officers. K-9 maintenance, the Police Commission had determined when we added a police K-9 last year or two years ago, that we were going to eventually add a second one. So there's a request in there for the maintenance portion of adding the next K-9. Training supplies, taser, firearms, body cameras for the new officers. Public relations. National Night Out, Citizens Police Academy costs money to run. So what we're asking for is a fairly modest increase in that public relations line to be able to fund those. We kind of did it this year, people donated things, you know, we kind of took money from other places that really weren't meant for that, but we wanted to make it work, and we certainly saw the benefit of it and the feedback. So we'd like to be able to at least have some money in the budget so we can fund those things, because unfortunately, they're not free to do those. And the officers across the board donated their time, it's not a salary issue, but it's the materials required to do those events. And testing accreditation, the accreditation fees, so as we're going through Kalia accreditation, there is a fee attached to that, and employment testing. So every time that we send somebody that we're hiring for psychological, drug testing, so on and so forth, there is a fee attached to that. So that is the presentation on that, and I will be happy to go through the budget and answer any questions you may have.
If we could put up the budget slide.
You ready?
I just wanted to say, Chief, could you send the board members that slide, the presentation?
Absolutely, yes.
Because it really, you know, fills in so much information.
Kevin, Sandy does have it, can she send it out?
Sure, okay.
It'll be sent out tomorrow, I can send it to everybody. Well, I've got it too, so between one of us, we'll get it out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Are we ready for questions, comments?
Sure. So on the K-9 maintenance?
Yes.
Do you have another K-9 that you're planning to get, or like what?
We don't, the thought process is to be at two K-9s, that was ultimately what the goal of the Police Commission was. So this would be the cost to maintain that through veterinary bills, equipment. So if it were to be approved, and we know it was going to be approved, then we would start the process into next year to look for a K-9 and select a handler, find a training. So there is a process involved, but I have to know that we're going to have the maintenance fee, because the vet bills, you know, certainly drive the boat on that, because we don't want to get the K-9 acquired from the town and then be responsible for it, but not have the funding for that portion.
And then my other question is, in the past, if you know, two years, how many police officers have you hired, like each year, like let's say the past two years?
New officers or replacement officers?
New officers.
New officers. So I think, two years ago, we had one, and then we had one and a half this year. So we hired one in July, and then a second one was half a year, so it was hired in January, and he just started the academy, I think January 17th is when he started.
And the academy, you said, is about six months?
It's six months in the academy, and then the FTO program. Generally, it's about 11-month process from hire date, or starting the academy to on your own, on the road.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll go next. Thank you for spending the time to prepare a very thorough presentation, very informative. I must say that I'm glad I haven't had to utilize all of these services. Probably the one I would have enjoyed most was meeting the police dog.
We still have it, yes.
But I think we're very fortunate in town, and we've seen a tremendous growth from when I first came to town, when we had part-time constables, and we've got a very professional force now to be very proud of. I have read recently that the state police enrollment is down, and I'm wondering if this is putting an additional burden on the town? Are you in any way called in to assist as they're dealing with problems within our town or from 95?
No, I think, you know, I think that's always been an issue, that state police, if you look at, let's just say, the patrol areas of Troop A, there are always times that they are spread extremely thin, where we've had to go to their areas to back them up, to start something for them. But I would not say that it has gotten drastically any different over the past couple of years. Their staffing is down, but their patrol areas are the same. So their problem with staffing is they have to fill more shifts with overtime, but they're still staffing the same number of troopers on the road, at least in Troop E's area. So it's, you know, a legacy problem of if the guy or girl who is responsible for 95 in East Lime has to go to Groton to back up the trooper responsible for that part of the highway, and there's an accident that happens up here, we may have to go up there and, you know, initially for that call to help them, but that's always been the case.
Well, I read the police log every day, and unfortunately, it's getting lengthier for East Lime.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if there's a relationship to that with perhaps less frequent drive-bys on 95 by the state police?
Yeah.
Because I'm seeing a tremendous number of out-of-town people appearing in the police log.
Yeah.
And we've always had exit 73, you know, 74 exits off, I mean, we're one of the few towns in the state that has four exits off 95. So I'm wondering if there's any correlation to some of these increased incidences that if the state police were patrolling more frequently on 95?
I don't believe so, because I don't think the state police patrols on 95 really did anything to deter crime in the area of maybe traffic control, speed enforcement, accident investigations, but certainly people that are coming from other places and going to some of our hotels, some of our businesses. But we also have to understand that right now, there's a lot of criminal activity that's taking place mobily, that people are going and committing crimes, for example, going to all these different CVSs, Walgreens, Stop &amp; Shops, shoplifting. So the state police patrol isn't going to do anything to impact that. This is just unfortunately part of society now, where I bet if we look at every police log, you see people that aren't from that community in large numbers being arrested because it is so mobile with people moving from place to place. And unfortunately, a lot of the people that we're arresting, multiple offenders, you know, they're the people that are shoplifting. They have a huge history many times with that shoplifting. We arrested a person the other day from New Haven on a warrant that we had for a shoplifting and a Stop &amp; Shop, and the reason they were caught was because they had done so many down there, the minute we put the picture up, they're all, this is who this is. And as you saw with many of these crimes that are happening. So I understand the question, or I appreciate it, I just don't think that anything other than society right now, the way crime is really spiking and increasing is the perpetrator of that.
If you talked about it, I apologize that I missed it, the police cadets program?
I did not.
Is that still active?
It's very active. That is not funded through the budget. That is Sergeant Mark Hallauer runs an excellent program, we have a lot of kids that are involved in that. That is a 501(c)(3) organization, so that is, while we endorse it, we support it, we provide him with time to do that, it is not funded through the police budget, it is done through private donations and fundraisers that they do.
That's still very active?
Very active, yes.
Are there any additional programs that we could apply to the state for, for reimbursement for any of the expenses, such as perhaps computers in the cars, purchasing through the state?
It's, well, it's great, great that you asked that question. You know, I was thinking about this when Dan was doing his presentation. This past year, I replaced all of the computers inside the police department utilizing a state grant. So all of our technology inside of our building is brand-new. The dispatch center was able to increase because of the move into the new building, that was part of that project. The police department has all brand-new computers at all the workstations that we utilize through a state grant. So we're always looking for money that is out there to try to help us with that. Lieutenant Masek's been working with the state right now for, we're going to be moving to E tickets in the cars, which is going to be a time saver, but the printers for that, to be able to get that off of state grants and not have to actually spend the money to buy those. So we're always looking for the technology and ability to do that, so anything that exists, we're going to try to find.
Will they provide any money for upkeep?
Generally, no.
So that, once we have it?
Sure.
It's on our bill. Okay. And what is the current waiting time for potentially new officers to get into the academy?
It depends. So we have several choices when it comes to academies. So Meriden, we'd have to put in ahead of time and say, we want one, two, how many seats we want in each academy class. And we're already having conversations for our regional academy in Norwich to put on a November class that is not finalized, but we believe that that's going to be the goal. This class graduates in July, and then probably start up the next class in November. And we'd have to look, if we were authorized to do any hires, to look at Meriden to see if there's any availability. And also, we have the ability to go to Hartford, New Britain, as those departments have the ability to go to our regional academy. We actually have one individual from Newington in that academy. So the state puts it out as a whole, looks at it in, you know, totality, and says, where can we put people, not just Meriden, but other satellite academies? So it's always something we're looking at, you know, regionally, we're looking at November, but I'd have to look at Post to see when they're having their next class. Problem with that always is, now we're coming into March, people have put in for seats probably all the way through the fall. So that's, the issue comes down with municipal budgets for every town, not just the town of East Lime. You have to ask early, and you have to know you're going to get approval to ask early, so it becomes very, very difficult. At the same time, we have to be able to manage departures. So people that may be retiring, and on the, you know, the customer retiring, that's another thing we have to be able to plan for, without really an ability to plan, so it becomes difficult to do that. So that's something we're always thinking about. The other caveat in that, in hiring, is lateral transfers. We have done an amazing, we've had amazing luck in hiring lateral transfers that have been outstanding officers. That's handpicked, that's not just, we're taking somebody because they are somebody who is certified, we're only going to hire people that are the right officers for our community. But if we have an opening and we put it out there, we may find that right officer immediately, but we may not. So it's something we have to really deal with every time we have openings, to see who's available and which route we're going to take.
And I think this is my last question. Have we had any officers leave that have gone to another town that might have more attracted?
The only, I, you know, take great pride in this, the only officer that has left our agency to go to another police agency was for the state police several years ago, because it was always his dream to do that. But we have not lost officers, we have actually gained multiple officers from other departments. We are a destination that people want to come to as police officers, and, you know, pay and benefits, sometimes they take a hit on that, but they come for the atmosphere. That is something we've always had a conversation about, that we create the atmosphere that people want to work in, and we have a community that people want to be part of. So I think those are two outstanding things that we have going for us. Now, can I say that's always going to be the case? Pay and benefits always factor in. I look at Bristol right now, and Bristol's giving an enormous bonus pay incentive for people to come there. Other towns are trying to do the same thing. So not saying we need to do that, but, you know, there's going to be competition, more and more competition for very good people to come into this profession.
On a personal note, I've had a couple of experiences with the police this year. I had a case of identity theft and another incident that occurred, and I couldn't have asked for any better assistance, any thorough assistance, and I don't think that my story's unusual.
Well, you know, and I appreciate that, and thank you for that feedback, and I'm glad that's your experience, and I'm sure, you know, Regina can tell us too. Each month, when I present to the Police Commission, my report indicates letters we've received and thanks we've received, and overwhelming support from the community, feedback that's very much like yours. Not negative feedback, not people calling and saying the police aren't doing their job. And, you know, if somebody calls us and has a question or has a problem with something, we address that head-on, and we'll look into it and try to solve that problem if it's indeed a problem. But, you know, 99% of the calls that we get or emails we get are positive. But, you know, ninety-nine percent of the calls that we get or emails we get are positive notes, just like yours.
And I'm also out at, out in town late at night and I'm a single driver. And it's very reassuring to see the police vehicles clearly marked, parked at the little parking lot off exit seventy-two, where people come off that exit like they're still driving on ninety-five.
Yep.
But to see them park there. And I think one of the big things that's enabled that to happen is the computers in the car.
Yes.
So they could sit there and do their reports and paperwork.
No, it's certainly.
If there was any action. So I think we're getting a very good return on our investments.
I think you absolutely are. The technology has been, you know, so crucial to so many positive changes to our, our agency and our ability to, to serve the public. The visibility is extremely important. You know, if you just saw the newspaper the other day, we had a stolen car. Unfortunately, the youth crashed that stolen car. We were able to take them into custody. But that's only possible because the officers are out there invisibly watching for things and people that are, that are doing things in our community. You don't get that if they're just sitting behind a desk or they're just sitting in a parking lot somewhere not paying attention. All of the times we see arrests for oil theft or grease theft or stolen vehicles, it's all because the officers were out there finding things that were happening and making sure we're keeping our community safe.
I know, I had no idea there was value in, in use of oil.
Yep. It's not just the, and really from our standpoint, it's the damage that's done to our restaurants. It's, you know, when they come in to take it, they damage all of their systems. So it's not just, hey, they're losing the value of the oil, which they could care less because they have to pay someone to take it out anyway. But it's the damage that's caused to their systems in order to get it.
Well, and thanks to you, I still have my catalytic converter in my car.
That's good. Hope that stays.
Hey, Dan, you have some questions?
Yes, you know, I noticed that the prisoner expense has gone down a little bit. And I'm going to surmise that, I mean, you've only had the lockup for a year and a half now. And your experience with it, are you finding that the costs are a little less than you predicted?
So, so that five thousand original amount was, I hate to use the word, but it was a guess. It was looking to other departments, what are they spending for prisoner expenses? What were we going to have to do to get us up and running? So some of that cost were fixed costs that were things, signage or things that we had to put into that area that aren't recurring costs. And we've really kind of, I think, honed down of what are our costs going to be for meals, for laundry and blankets and things like that? So I think we're safe to go down in that because a lot of those costs have been already taken care of.
And I, I noticed, now, we split the boat storage maintenance with Waterford, is that right?
No.
No.
So there, there's maintenance on the regional boat that's split with Waterford. We have our own boat for the town of East Lime, where we are a hundred percent responsible for those costs. So there's a mix on those. Waterford is the controller of the regional boat. So a lot of times, they'll work with Lieutenant Masek or Sergeant Renshaw to say, we have to do X to the boat. Here's what it costs and we get the bill and have to split that.
And so that line item is a mix of our own boat that we pay a hundred percent on and the fifty percent, whatever the split is with Waterford?
That's correct, yes.
That's it for me, thank you.
I do have one other question.
Can I?
Officer Sir?
Can we just get the rest of the board going, come back to you?
All right, I was just going to ask about Officer Hovdowski, if he was the only officer retiring?
Right now, yes.
Yes, yes.
And?
Yeah, a question, Chief, about our population. Yep, yeah, eighteen thousand, six ninety-three, that's twenty-twenty, I guess, that's.
Off the census, yes, correct.
That's as official as we can get unless we kind of guess. But do you have a, an estimate of what our population looks like in the summer?
I don't. I, I don't have a, a good gauge of that. I've read numbers over the years that I think, you know, are ballpark guesses of how many people come in. But I think certainly we look at Celebrity's line, for example, we have ten thousand plus people that probably come in for that rocky neck with the, you know, the activities there, Costco, the people that come in Main Street, people that come in. So, you know, certainly our population just from visitors probably raises several thousand a day in the summer, at least. And, and summer population of houses probably several thousand. So, you know, the, the impact is, is pretty heavy, I think.
Right, well, so that's my follow-up question. So with several thousand more for that stretch of time, let's say it's May to September, then you generally see increases in these categories of things, motor vehicle accidents, your calls, your crying?
So if you were to go back, if you were to go back and look through our, our reports for the police commission?
Your monthly reports, right.
You clearly see the spikes that happen, May, June, July, August. It really starts to go up and really September starts to, starts to tail off tremendously. I think that's always been an issue. But one of the concerns that, that I didn't bring up that, that we, we sometimes fail to talk about is development. When you have housing developments that come into town, you have businesses that come in. It has an impact on your public safety. And some of the things that are being proposed now, and we've talked about, certainly are going to have an enormous impact on public safety. And the number of calls for service we get there, the number of activities that we have to deal with, not just the traffic, but also going to people's homes, apartments, condominiums because of issues that they may be having. Always remembering, you're not conversely sometimes raising your policing staff or your numbers of police out on the roads, but we're asking them to go to service more and more people out there, which is certainly becomes more and more strained on the ability to do that. Because, you know, you look at some of the sizes of the condominium complexes we have in this town, some of the housing that has been put in or is being put in. You know, now you think about the south officer in this town that has to deal with from Pine Grove all the way to Giant's Neck and all the way up to the middle school area of town. All of those beach communities, all of those condo complexes is one officer. So it goes from call to call, it becomes very, very difficult at times. So I think that's a piece of it too. Not, that's year-round. And then you throw into that additional population that takes place or comes into town. You know, now it becomes almost unmanageable at times. So we always try to look for effective ways to add to patrol, add to the staffing that's out there. But we don't have the big pool to do that from, so.
Yeah, just, yeah, but you may want to highlight this, the summer issue, but clearly, yes, with development in town, it comes, comes all of the needs and all of the issues, for sure. You mentioned foot patrols, and that is something I hear from business owners on Main Street, that the desire for more foot patrols. So do you want to address that a little?
No, I think, and I think that's something that, you know, is a reason I'm asking for an increase in that line so we can provide more of that. So we have the ability to bring officers in on overtime to work that. Problem is, is, you know, again, I say that South Patrol, which would include Main Street, we can't have the South Patrol officer out on a foot patrol for any period of time because what if they have a call to back up an officer up in the Flanders section? They're not, they have to be in their car, they have to be ready to go to that call. So that, that foot patrol has to be somebody on overtime or extra duty to be able to devote just to that. I think that's something we hear as well. But we also recognize that it's an area that gets so populated, it's so busy. Now we have some, you know, more and more businesses and restaurants down there. I think we have to pay much more and more, much closer attention to it as an agency.
You know, with the state beginning its, the changes to our ninety-five entrance exit, the seventy-four exit, that, I, I just envision that being another motor vehicle nightmare, you know, and, and for the next, you know, it won't be easy.
It's a four-year project starting in April and it's, it's going to be challenging.
It's obviously necessary that it happens. And, and it'll be staged and, you know, it'll be total pandemonium. But, you know, it will, it will again ask for your resources, you know, like everything else.
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you.
And?
Yeah, just on overtime, five fourteen, do you foresee that number going down in the future or?
It's, it's, no, I don't, I, I don't, I don't see it reducing. But historically, you know, we've been at that number or slightly above. This is the first year we're probably going to end up having to come back and ask for additional funds. But remembering, Board of Finance last year cut it thirty thousand and said, we know you're going to have to come back because what we asked for is not what we got. But it's the best case guess, and we try to manage it the best we can. We don't have a lot of discretionary overtime. But being hit with anomalies such as five officers out or now having an officer out on maternity leave long-term, we need to replace that officer or those officers when they're out. So there's a cost involved in that. So it's hard to even gauge or, or forecast that. I'd like it to go down, certain, certainly, but we never know.
And is it also part in the, in the, in their contract that they get a certain amount of overtime?
No.
No?
No.
Great, all right, thank you.
And just a point, you know, you talk about the three-man minimum, and I think that went to effect somewhere around Mike, two thousand and three. I think it's about when it went to a three-man minimum. But that was also three patrols. There was a north, south, and west because supervision, if needed, was provided by the state police. That doesn't happen anymore. So now we have three people out there, a north and south. And the sergeant, who's the supervisor, does handle a lot of calls. I mean, because it's just the necessary too. So, yeah, so considering the, the added patrols area that the two guys on patrol do, and the sergeant is frequently out on the road too, so.
And, and again, you know, I, I stress that's an issue, the calls, calls being stacked because you have to wait to respond to it. But also the in-depth nature of some of these investigations. A lot of the scams that are happening right now require multiple search warrants, which is one of the things we're really focusing on, trying to get the staff to be able to do that properly because it takes an exorbitant amount of time. So it's difficult for an officer to be going, you know, on evening shift to six, seven, eight calls and still trying to work on some of these investigations. So we're trying to better prepare and, you know, find ways. And that's probably going to end up being a third detective in the department that's really going to focus on a lot of those things. So we're trying to look at that staffing right now and, you know, figure out the best way to handle that because we all know scams are what is the biggest driver, I mean, crime right now, by far. And we got to try to, you know, do what we can because that is a daily, daily occurrence. We're getting calls for that. And it becomes a very, very difficult thing for officers on patrol to deal with because of the time factor of going call to call. And then, oh, by the way, our biggest complaint always is traffic. But it's difficult to do traffic enforcement when you're going call to call or doing investigations. You don't have the time to sit and run radar. So, you know, something has to give sometimes, and, and that's why the staffing becomes so crucially important, to have more people on a shift to be able to take some of that buffer out of it, where it's not just that minimum patrol all the time. You have officers out there with four people, let's say, because that's what we're staffed at. Maybe not the minimum patrol, but because the staffing allows that, we're able to get to that number. So officers have more of an ability to be proactive, to respond better, to follow up better on their calls.
And I think what we did with the START program and so forth like that, just the regional issue with Waterford and the mutual assistance. A couple of weeks, a few weeks ago, we had an incident at night where we just didn't have the resources. And we were able to get a couple Monville cars to come down and provide traffic control up on Route one sixty-one where Watermain Bridge was. It's to help that out, but just because we didn't have the resources. So, yeah, I think we've done everything possible, enhanced what we can do. But I look back to the swatting call earlier this year where, you know, those things can go so bad so quickly. And it's not easy to, and we wound up making an arrest on that. And that, I can only imagine the time and effort that had to go into that, to locate that. But here again, it's a serious crime because if someone could have easily been hurt very badly in a situation like that.
It took a tremendous amount of time in a situation that, you know, most agencies, I hate to say this, but most agencies would have folded and just said, okay, chalk it up to nothing happening. We didn't have that mentality. We wanted to find the person that did it, we wanted to hold them responsible to make sure that they weren't doing something in the future. Or if they did, we did everything that we could to try to avoid something, you know, happening in the future. So I think our officers did an amazing job of multiple search warrants over multiple months to find somebody, you know, in a small town in Pennsylvania that was sitting in his house doing this and never thought anybody was going to find him doing this. So I think, you know, again, it's tenacious police work, it's good, effective police work, but it's time-consuming.
Other questions for Chief?
Just, maybe, just a comment, a suggestion maybe, on the public relations? I can't find it now, but we do have.
Three twenty-nine.
Three twenty-nine.
Yeah. You know, you were talking about the scam, you know, problem, that's a large. I wonder if, if, as part of that, maybe there could be something to educate the public on what to watch out for that might take some of the pressure off the police, at the same time educate those that might get caught up in something.
So I will say, you know, we're always looking for new avenues to do that. We do give talks at AHPA, we do give talks at the Senior Center, because that is the vulnerable population. I'm preparing a press release for, we have a Bitcoin case that we're waiting for the state's attorney to make some determinations on, to put that out as a wider net of, here's a situation that happened, this is an example of some of the things, and to try to have it be an educational piece for our residents. So again, we're always looking for new avenues to do that. And unfortunately, the scams are ever-changing. And, you know. It, it's almost like in the frustration we have sometimes is like the stolen cars, telling people, lock your cars, take your keys out. Same thing when somebody calls your house and says, we want you to give this courier who comes to your driveway five thousand dollars cash, and they believe them and give it to them. And, you know, we have to keep educating people, that's the only solution to it. But, you know, it gets difficult because trying to find the right ways to communicate with people is difficult. And it's not just us that has this problem, it's such, so widespread.
All right, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, would we like to entertain a five-minute break prior to?
Yes.
Okay, let's, make a pause if you could hit the. Okay, we are back after our short break. And Joe, you're here for Public Works Highway and Sanitation.
Well, thank you for having me. Just, so in this budget, there is nothing, just right off the thing, there's no extra people I'm asking for, there's no extra services. I can go down any of the cost increases. We're just trying to fight the increasing cost of things while trying to keep as cost-effective a budget as possible. What's showing here is a two-point-nine-nine percent increase. I'll go over the, the things that make up what change, or what kind of things that jump out at me. And for most of it, the first line, the two-eleven, and the two for the personnel, personnel services and the three-eleven, I'm sure you've heard this repeatedly, but the amended budgets didn't include any increases. That's why it looks like there's large increases in different lines because this is like almost two years increases of, so I'm sure all the, all the, so.
Yeah.
Besides that, there's no extra personnel. I think you said something about the salaries. So it, it is always hard to try to figure out the regular payroll because there's a constant flux of people, like we had Bobby Schultz, who was here at thirty-something, I don't know, forty?
Forty-four.
Forty-seven, yeah.
Forty-seven, oh.
But then we have new people, and then we have other people coming in. So I, I tried to give the Director of Finance, like, a list of, this is what I have now compared to last year. So that's the best guess of the number that we have in there. Overtime highway, the three-fourteen, it, we have been seeing, so a big part of that is when we do the double collection days on holidays, we've been, you know, for the, we've been, we've been being asked to give more coverage on the Celebrity's Lime days. We have, we, we put the people out there for the light parade. There's a lot of different events, plus all of our activities during the summer. Sometimes if we're doing a road job and we're there until five o'clock or something like that, we need extra staffs to, to do things safely. So we, if you notice on the line three-fourteen, the actual expense of overtime last twenty-two was thirty thousand, but it, you know, the budgets were twenty because you got to move money there. So that's why I was trying to bump up to twenty-five to be more in line with what we really are targeting. Storm overtime, I mean, I'm happy to report this year.
Don't, don't report it. You can report that next month.
Everyone's happy and checked out, looking forward to it. It's, it's not icing up yet, but we've been very fortunate this year, but you never know, year to year. And in past, like last year was seventy-seven thousand, this year we're, we're doing very well. But until we can figure out and move money from one year to the next year, we have to figure out, and I know that's probably not the best way, is, is we have to put, so I put in a little more money because if the salaries are going up and the exposure is going up, I had to raise that line item, that three-fifteen. Line, I'm still going down the personnel services, three-sixteen and three-seventeen. There are just some things within the UPCU contract with longevity and a uniform allowances that went up. So it's not like, it's just contractual obligations. On line two-twenty-four, road reconstruction repair, that's like the main, that's the major line that we have, be able to do anything, whether we buy our, sort of like our, we're very fortunate to have talented crews that we can go out and do a lot of the drainage work and a lot of, you see our crews out on the side of the road. Well, all the stuff we buy, all the precast structures, you know, thirty-three percent more, everything that we, the asphalt, everything. So this is the main meat and potatoes line. And actually, in past years, that line was in, you know, two, two-ten, two-twenty, and two-twenty-twenty-two, we spent two-twelve. This year's budget was one-ninety-seven, and I'll tell, tell you about as we go along. If we're, if we're running behind on fleet maintenance or something like that and we need to transfer money, then I take it out of this account. So it's really important to, to put a little extra money in that account to try to keep up with all the road. And this is all the maintenance, all the other stuff. This isn't, this isn't even the paving program. This is just keeping the general maintenance of the roads in town. Tree, it looks like, tree maintenance has been. Tree, it looks like, tree maintenance has been, it's expensive with all the dead trees out there, as you're aware, I'm the tree warden as well. We have done a decent job of getting Eversource to cut down. I've been working with them. And whenever there's a line anywhere in the vicinity of a tree, I call up Eversource and they've been really good. But it's expensive business, the cost of tree, I mean, if anyone would have it at their house or know people do, is the cost of that stuff isn't cheap these days. So it looks like even that was cut, I didn't even know that, but there was a little bit cut out of that. So we'll do the best we can there. In the contracted operations, the biggest line I'd like to talk about here is 295 SCARA. I know you guys, I've told you guys in the past, SCARA is a huge value to the town of Eastlime and to all the regional communities, and we're very fortunate. But SCARA is even under pressure because, I mean, the going rate of trash in the state of Connecticut is about $110 a ton. And we pay sixty, sixty, no, 59. And our contracts in SCARA, the President's SCARA, is going up 3% a year. And I'm working on a five-year tip fee projection right now with the executive board to try to tell, you know, policy boards of all the towns in SCARA where this is going. Because our contract is only good for another seven years. And even though it sounds like eternity, if the going rate's 110 and we're paying 59 and the going rate's 110, we're trying to figure out how to stabilize it. So just as a kind of a stay tuned, there is some upward pressure on that because, you know, SCARA is increasing their tip fee price by, I think it's 3.25%. So that's what, that's why that increases there. Along a similar lines on 296 bulky waste. So if you go to the transfer station and the biggest hottest item at the transfer station line is people bringing the bulky waste. And bulky waste is basically anything that can't go in the can. And so that has to be put in dumpsters. That gets sent up to Willimantic Waste. There's really no other place to bring it. And they, so between the cost of the tip fee has gone up significantly. And the cost of the transportation of the bulky waste on the positive side, so that, that's why that line item is going up. And the positive is I have been keeping up, whenever those rates go up, and I'm doing a correspondent, I come to this board and we keep raising the bulky waste rate, the cost at the transfer station. So it does produce more revenue. And I'll be coming back to the board in the next few months to try to keep up with those. Because the costs keep going up every like four or five months. And we're trying to keep up so it's at least kind of somewhat based on a user of the people dumping the waste, the bulky waste at the transfer station. So that's, that's that line, line 296. Fleet maintenance is one of the ones I was kind of referring to about road reconstruction. If you look at the 22, actual expenses, 278. That year was budgeted at 225. So I basically moved money out of road reconstruction to fund fleet maintenance if it's a really bad year. We maintain the police vehicles. We maintain the parks and rec vehicles. We maintain, we, our department maintains all the vehicles. Board of Ed does pay for their materials and supplies. Water and Sewer pays for their materials and supplies. But all the other departments in town, we, it has to come under this fleet maintenance. So there's a lot of pressure on that. There is, the cost of, the cost of parts and everything like that has gone sky high. Plus, you know, there's a lot, we have a lot of vehicles in town, you know, the police, the police department's got a lot of vehicles there and, you know, it's just keeping up. So we're, I'm trying to bump that up to a more appropriate number, the 260, no, excuse me, 267, that went down a little bit. But that's a number that there's a lot of pressure on. And this year, that number is probably going to come in, this fiscal year is probably going to come around 270 to keep, to keep all the vehicles in a safe condition. If you go to the next line, the next three, the 300 operating expenses. The biggest jump here is the storm materials. And it ties together with the line of storm, storm overtime. Again, we're fortunate this year, we haven't had to buy a lot of salt. But a typical year is 1800, we buy about 1800 tons of salt. I've had years where we bought 3,000. I've, you know, then this year, this year it might be 6, 700 or less. But the cost of, in the last three winters, of salt has been up 50%. And that's, that's, it's up 50% now. And I'm guessing it's going to go up another 10%. So that's, that's where that big jump is, is paying for the salt costs. You know, it's not like you can just cut back in salt. If it's a winter, you had to keep putting it down. So want to make sure we have enough money to cover that. Fleet fuel, the chief basically just mentioned it when he talked about boat fuel. But this line actually, I do, important, when I was calculating the, because I oversee the water and sewer and I was going over the water budget. The number I put in, in the spreadsheet that I calculated this was based on the current year's fuel prices and not, the spreadsheet didn't update. So there's, we're going to have to be adding an extra $41,000 to this line, unfortunately, to keep up with the actual. It's two, yeah. It's, the numbers really should be 275, eight. What I do is, so you're all aware, I don't, I mean, if anyone ever wants to see it, but I have a thing of like, it's like four years running of all the different departments. This is actual usage. This is projected usage. And then all the costs. And it's basically, what are you paying for the fuel and who's using it? And I, and this budget picks up, this fuel thing picks up the building maintenance department, the building official, the, what is it here? Oh, the senior, the senior buses, the fire marshal, the police, the parks and rec, the ACO, engineering sanitation highway. And that's for unleaded and diesel. So I was looking and talking to the chief about, with all these details that are, the police details that we've been going with exit 74, about having some reimbursement to the, because those, those police cars are going to, they charge them out at $25, I believe. Is, I'm going to go to the board of police commissioner next month to see if we can do a fuel surcharge. Because I did, I pooled all the, I sent some out to all the public works listserv in the state of Connecticut. In most towns, the police and the other departments pay for their fuel, but we cover it all here. So if they're, if they're having to go out and, you know, have four or five vehicles on, sitting on exit 74. Because you can't not turn off, you can't leave, you can't turn off a police vehicle with all the, you know, the, all the laptops and all.
I may have done that several times and you have to, it's awful when it falls down.
So it's not just the fuel use, it's the engine time. Those, the fleet, I mean, I've already been warned by the fleet manager. It's going to definitely burn through those cars much quicker to have all those cars sitting there, running 10 hours a day. You know, and it's going to be middle of summer. It's going to be so, it's something to stay tuned. If we can get some of that revenue, then it might be able to help this line. But other than that, our department is picking up departments that I don't even know what the police, how many cars, you know. So it's something that we got to make sure that we have covered in this line. And that's why it's got to get bumped up to the 275. I finally hit on the line that I'm most proud of for the people that have done this board. I finally can say the line went down. And you guys all been saying, you say, yeah, Joe, yeah, Joe. Finally, finally hit, 2015, we, we were the first town around to purchase, excuse me. First town to get, to buy auto lights and change them to LED. We did a seven-year loan. We, I told you, I told the boards that we were going to hold the same price for the streetlights. And we, and we did. And now it dropped, it's now, the payment for those seven years is 145,000. And this line's dropping by 140, 144.9. So that's to show the savings that we were, after these last seven years, is we were only paying this amount, but we had to pay that loan. So now going forward, we have this savings, which, you know, I couldn't have guessed five, six years ago. And I know, you know, whether, all the departments are doing the best job of putting in this, but it's a very difficult, difficult year. So it's nice to have 145,000 savings in a budget that just happened to hit this year. And that's going forward. So I finally can say that it finally happened. And then the townie road, that I had no control of. That's something that Kevin gets. And I guess they're giving us less money, but that's why I don't think, the Port of Sleipen didn't drop that per se. That's what, that's what the state is now saying is the number.
Well, here, here again.
The number is the number.
But here again, the number, that's the governor's proposed budget. And as Holly has, you know, and Senator Marks has said, that's just the first round.
Yeah.
There's all bills already in place to restore some funding. So I think we'll see some relief. But, you know, as we've talked about, there's a pretty big hole from what we thought we were going to get to what we are getting right now. But a lot of that will, some of that will come back.
So the last of the part, I went through the expenses, is the revenue. And I am showing an increase in commercials. So when I was saying that SCARA's costs for the tip fees were going up, we're going to start charging the commercial contractors, that's going to go up. Because I don't know if you realize, so, you know, if our town, if, with our town trucks, if you go up and you have a town can, we pick it up, someone doesn't pay for that cost. But if someone has a dumpster, if someone, say Dairy Queen has, that complex has a dumpster. You know, CWPAM or one of these commercial contractors will pick it up, they go up to Lisbon, they say it's from Eastlime. They, they send us the bill and we charge them back for the tonnage. And if we're paying a certain amount, we have the ability to charge them a surcharge on top of that. And that's what, by having the cost per ton going up, we can produce more revenue, which is still fair. It's still in line with what all the other towns are doing. It's not like we're doing anything different than any other town. But as, as the costs go up, the revenue goes up because we're charging back 40% of our tonnage is commercials. And then the other 60% is residential, which is all costs. There's no reimbursement. The reason why recycling, others going down, is we were getting ridiculously crazy rates. We got a really good deal with scrap as far as we get 90% of the New York, I bit it out and it was 90% of the New York scrap bundles and so that. And that was getting really high last year and this year. Those numbers are starting to go down. So I want, I want to be conservative. I'm, you know, thinking that we weren't going to be getting $350 a ton. So that's why that number went down. And even though landfill deposits show the same amount, that's, I have seven years running of all the stuff. The reason, I mean, we were getting only about 110,000 about four, five, six years ago in revenue. But it's because I've been trying to keep the costs of the tip coming out of the transfer station commensurate with what we're being charged. So we're staying on top of it. And I don't think people, you know, we don't get a lot of complaints about that. And I mean, it's a public service. They can use it or not. It's very convenient. It's very popular as, as the first letman knew. When we had to close it one day because we had trees down.
Oh, yes, that was.
It was like an act of God and the delivery of the suit of the transfer station.
Which happened to be the week right after Christmas too, which couldn't have made it worse.
So even though we have, yeah, even though we have costs, we're trying to keep up with also the revenue. I know we don't have a ton of revenue, but it's still good that we have some revenue to offset costs. So, you know, with a 2.99, it's going to be a little more with every factor on, but it's still pretty low. To having some increase in revenue, I like to think that it's giving a great value to the residents for what we provide for road sweeping, line striping that someone was going to say about the other day, just all the things that we're doing.
The email we got, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's people, between all the things and the garbage, and I think we give a very good value to towns. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions? We'll start with this side, with you adding this time, if you have any.
Oh, me? Okay.
Yeah.
So on overtime, a highway and storm overtime, you said that you would save more this year. What happens to that money that you save, like from salting or, you know, from the storm overtime?
So my, my goal is that anything that we don't use, it's going to go back into, it's going to get turned at the end of the year, which just helps roll, roll it. You know, you can't roll it into next year's budget.
No.
No, okay. So it goes back into the, okay.
Yeah. It just, only because we have a department meeting today and, you know, considering we do have pretty good shape. But I said, right now, I don't want to put a freeze in, but, you know, considering we may have a shortage at the Board of Ed and so forth and that. As much of a freeze or as much as of a conservation effort as possible to try so we can, the more we can return to the general fund and the fund bounce, the better it is for us. And, you know, as time goes on, we'll have a better, clearer picture. Rather than moving it to other areas for other expenses, right now, it's going to have to go back to the, you know, back to the general fund.
Yeah. There's the two lines. It's the storm overtime and there's the storm materials. And they're, they run similar. The storm materials, we ended last year, maybe like a two-thirds full dome, like our dome could probably, that salt dome. And we, we have since filled it up just because we were trying to be ready for the winters, but we haven't really dug into it. So it's always good to start the year with a full dome. So that would help. But we are, it was, it's our intention of returning all those funds back to town to help. I'm not going to run out and buy a truck or something. It's not, that's not, so we can turn on, that's what the goal is. But I can't then assume that next year's going to be like that. This is just an aberration. It's unbelievable what's going on. I'm happy.
Yeah. Okay, one more question. You said the contract for the SCARA tipping fee was good for seven years and we pay 59 and the going rate is 110. So is that, say, static at 59?
No, it goes up three and a half percent.
Each year then?
So, yeah. Just so you understand how SCARA works, is our contract is for 72 with SCARA's contract, and then that goes up every 3%. We're paying 59. SCARA subsidizes every ton that SCARA, that we, that all the SCARA, and they do that because over the 30 years that they built up, that they were able to build a reserve. But that reserve is going to start getting drained. So we're trying to, we're trying to make this so that we're paying the least price in the state for as long as we can. But it's not just a tip fee. It's if you've been to a household hazardous waste day, either in Eastlime or anywhere you can bring in SCARA, that's all free to the residents. If you've ever been to the transfer station, all the, all the tub grinding, all that mulch that people can have, like, you know, all that, the grinding of all the brush and so that, that's free. There's all, the waste oil, that's free. There's so many things, the mattresses, they do so many things to benefit towns in SCARA that it is such an enormous value. You might have not heard this acronym, but MIRA is the facility that closed down. That they're the ones that, that basically serviced all the mid to central Connecticut. They closed. So all those people, all those towns are like just dropped now where they now have to pay a going rate of 110. I mean, 40% of the trash in the state of Connecticut is now leaving the state to go to landfills in Ohio. It's unbelievable. And SCARA is ahead of this thing. We're trying, we're in the process of trying to build a comp, or looking into building a compost facility to bring food waste out of the system. We're doing all kinds of, we're like cutting edge. I'm really proud of it. And when I first guided 10 years ago, Paul Fermi, can first says, get on SCARA and make sure you're involved because it's really important to town. I'm president now. And it's, it's making a huge difference. So it really helps this highway department or the town's budget that we have this deal. And I'm trying to continue this deal not only for Eastlime, but all these other towns. And it's, it, you know, so we're very fortunate. But yeah, that's the thing is we're paying 59 this year. It's going into 6125. But 6125, SCARA is actually getting charged 72. So SCARA is subsidizing the rest.
Okay.
And they also pick up all the costs of all the recycling that, when that costs money too. So it's a humongous value. And the executive director is planning on, of SCARA is planning on going to all the chief elected officials and the boards to try to kind of go over some of the things and tell them that this, you know, the costs are going to start going up. Just so towns are aware of, hey, why isn't it $60? Well, that's not the going rate. Because once you're done with the contract in 2030, if you're subjected to the, to the, you're going to go from $60 to 110. It's, that's just one of those things that you don't want to go to this meeting when you have an increase. Yeah, it's a six, yeah, it's a $500,000 increase. So we're trying to stretch this out. And I just want the board to realize, and I think you've been hearing over the years, it's a, it's a really, really good deal.
Yeah. Well, Joe, at the cog meeting last week, that was one of the topics is, you know, the incinerators, it's getting harder and harder. We have to, you know, more and more. Towns are having to ship their, their refuse out of state, which obviously comes with a huge cost. So, you know.
Yeah. And when that happens, then the garbage companies have all the control. And right now, at least, we're fortunate enough to have a contract for seven years. But you have to have some foresight to think in this business, think seven years in advance to what's going to happen in 2030. Because if you wait till 2028, you're too late. I mean, it's going to take way too long to build a compost facility or do something that's pretty state-of-the-art to try to stay ahead of things. So it, it's just, it's just one of the things that we do in the department and it's, it's very important. I just want to make sure you guys are aware of it.
Yeah, no, thank you. Just one more quick question.
Sure.
The, this is something that I guess I've been seeing in the news and I've been hearing about. Is the salt that they, they're putting on the roads that is getting into the, into the water system? Is there anything that can be done instead of putting down salt or is there something?
Yeah. So I don't.
That you know about that?
So there was a woman from, I think, one of the Eastlime Conservation Commission that reached out and got that. So that's happening everywhere. That's a, it's a, it's a problem everywhere. That's not Eastlime.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that.
I go to restaurants, I go, let's have some of that sodium water, you know, because everyone's has this problem. The problem is our, our system is wells, whereas a reservoir might be less, you know, rotten in a lot of other places, London and so that is reservoir. But it's a different taste of water. So to answer your question, you can possibly do it. But our two biggest wells are where, do you know where they are? They're right down with the Little League. They're right down with the Little League fields, they're right by the youth football field and so that. And that's the whole school property that the school never paid for any salt, I paid for their salt and they put it out. You know, because if people are wearing bad shoes or something like that, they, you go through a lot of those parking lots. I say that because I, we've had a discussion, I've sat down with Super Ten Newton and Chris Lund, and they understand now and they are.
Well, you've actually did training this, Joe actually did training this year.
We brought Green Snow Pro program, had all the Board of Ed people, Parks and Rec, all our guys, cause a lot of the, we have so many new plow drivers and all, they didn't, oh, just let it go, you know, no, you don't, you have to put it down, calibrate your truck. So, um, we could get in the thing where the Board of Ed now is to go on the road and get products that aren't sodium based, but it's gonna cost mucho bucks and they've been taking the salt from public work, so they would have to do that on their own. So we're trying to work with them and we're, we're taking the tact of, um, of education of the plow drivers and also, um, you know, just making sure that you don't, you have to put down the right amount. But it's always gonna be a balance of public safety. I mean, we, we could not put anything on school property and people slip and, and, you know.
Yeah, I know, you don't want that, I mean, obviously, yeah.
The well, the, the well areas, um, you know, you, you have to, you know, it's kind of hard to, uh, we're, we're looking into, but the, the key was we had the, uh, we had the educate, we had programs, um, to education, awareness. I think that's the right way to go, cause if you start getting too costly, I'm gonna have to start ramping up the budgets if you want to start getting to change products. If you go to different chemicals and stuff like that, you have to get onboard equipment and like the state has all those calcium chloride and they have all those, um, ta- you can see the tanks on top of the thing, that stuff, you have to get a chemical, um, storage area. You have to get tan, to transfer, it, there's a lot to having chemicals like that, now you're putting it onboard, it's a lot of money to go that route. So we're trying to, um, try to this route of education and trying to minimize it, so that's what we're doing.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have just a couple of questions, but to follow up on Ann's question and your conversation about the salt. In the last two years, I know this year we haven't had many events where we needed, um, to, to treat, but I have noticed that over at the high school, much less heaping of salt. Like if you go by the tennis court.
Cause that's when we've been meeting with them the last two years.
I mean, just it, it's sufficient, but it would be so, so bad that you wouldn't want to take your dog walking there, that, you know, it used to be just way too much, so that's, that's a good thing. Back to four, well, we're on storm materials and supplies four forty, so I understand that, yes, you would put this back into our, our general fund, should this not be used, but you, you already are starting with a good supply of storm, of the, of some storm materials, is that, am I understanding that?
Right now, yes.
Into next year, assuming we don't have disaster March and April, then you're going into the next year with, with a sufficient supply or?
We're going to year with a full.
Full supply, which, yeah.
I, I wouldn't say it's a full year, but it's, um, it's better than last year, put that way. Last year, we, I wasn't in a position, you know, sometimes you end of the year, do you fill the dome up or do you have any money left? I wasn't able to do that. Now, we filled the dome up right before the season starts, so yes, we have a full, um, compliment salt right now, but that, you know, hopefully we can get through the winter, so, but.
Right, right, so, so, um, for next, for this, next year's budget, twenty three, twenty four, so that the two hundred and twelve thousand dollars there, there's no reduction that's shown so far, so you would, because you, because you have some going into next year, you would not, do you feel comfortable, not feel comfortable reducing that line, that's line four forty?
I mean, when, when the board starts looking at places that they need to find money, that is a very, very good place to look because I am ahead of the game right now. But if next year, it goes through, it's a three thousand, ten year, so I can't stop, I mean, I can't just stop and go to a board meeting to ask for salt, we're just gonna keep buying it and we'll have to pay it out of contingency. Cause it, it's, when you get it, when there's a run on, the winter's, there's a run on salt, um, you know, you, you have to buy it, you can't wait two weeks to get permission, so.
So John, um, lines three twenty, three twenty one and four twenty, uh, say, just above our storm materials and supplies, those lines. So, so, you know, there are increases there, um, look to be, you know, based upon, um, general inflation that's been happening. But do you have other information that's helping you to make those decisions about those numbers? That isn't just a general number about, you know, inflation?
So, so, so let's break another, I'd rather start with safety equipment training. For, you heard the chief with all their training, I have a lot of training that I have to do with people and I do it with almost next to no money. So, um, every year I try to put, I mean, like say that Green Snow Pro program, I didn't have to do that because it costs money, but it was important to actually get all the departments in there to do that. So I think to put an extra thousand dollars in the training thing, when the, all the different training of all the new people is, is a thousand dollars, I think it would be unfortunate to start cutting the trainings of, of these guys. The, um, the landfill materials and transfer, uh, transfer station, it just, the, the computer systems up there, the scales, all the different things is costing more money as far as the programs. And on a year, on a given year, if I don't have enough, I take it, I have to take it out of another line. So instead of taking out of the line, I'm trying to properly fund these lines. So I was trying to put a little more money in there just because every year I'm going over in those lines. You don't see it in your stuff because once I hit the max, then I have to take it out of, like a road reconstruction or something like that. And supplies and miscellaneous, I have really no other place to buy anything between, road reconstruction is all the road work and supplies and miscellaneous is the whole department. That's anything else, there's, uh, I, I, I break down every single thing and thing to the penny. So I have a full thing and break down, I, I can show it, I show it to the thing. So, um, even though it looks like just putting these things, these amounts up, all those things are, there's a lot of pressure on all those lines, so that's why I try to properly fund them.
So you're trying to avoid a transfer of, from another account into these accounts?
Yeah, because then I can't do all the, the, the road work that we're supposed to be doing because I need thirty thousand in fleet maintenance, I need fifty, I need four thousand in the landfill or so that. And, and for anyone, I would encourage you to go up to the transfer station, like we've done a ton of work up there and the place is being transformed, we're about to put in a scale, a new scale, that the, the existing scale keeps popping through. Tires are popping through, the things, it's, it's in a confined space underneath that it's, it's all corroded. So we're putting in a new scale, we're putting in a new house, the guys don't even have a bathroom up there. So now I have to pay more to get like, you know, porta potty, we're trying to put like proper, so, so, um, that, that funding that landfill, we should stop, we should just be calling it transphill, it's really not a landfill anymore, um, is important.
Line four sixty, the storm order permit compliance, that one thousand dollars, there's a similar line in the engineering one oh five. So how does this differ?
The enge- so the engineering budget, um, the, the storm order sampling, um, is going up and up. It's, it's one of those unfunded mandates that they keep doing for all the storm order MS four permits, we have all the industrial permits. I put the money over in engineering, cause that's where it should be as far as those things. The reason I have a thousand dollar line out of it is there's nowhere else to go in engineering. If I need more money there in engineering for the storm or permitting, like if this is a year where I need more permitting, I have a line here, a thousand dollars, and if I had to bring a thousand dollars more for some of that, I have to do the permitting. Because otherwise I have to go to a board to ask for.
Right, so this is, this is a kind of contingency for that?
That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a token amount so that if I have more sampling on the engineering side, but the amount of sampling that they're requiring us to do now is ramping up every year.
And are there laboratory fees going up exactly?
And our guys are taking, our guys are doing all the samples, like a lot of towns would just go and have the samples. Our guys do all the sampling, yeah, they go out there in the corner and they, they're going to get all things, they're bringing the samples. They're doing everything they can to save the money. It's the amount of sampling that you have to do now is, is, is a heck of a lot more than it was five, ten years ago. And every town is facing that.
I have a couple more, but we'll, they'll probably get, they'll probably get asked this way, so go ahead.
What are traffic calming measures, I don't know what that means.
Well, um, yeah, it's, it's two twenty five. What I had been doing, um, so the reason I put it in is obviously speeding is so, um, big in town and people, so what I was doing is that, that, that line I was actually buying digital speed signs, which definitely worked.
Okay, that's what that is.
And so, but then, this is a perfect year, we're like, with all these cost overruns with fuel and a lot of other different things like that, it's hard to be buying more digital speed signs when you have to pay for a higher amount of fuel and higher amount of this. So I did drop that amount, but typically a digital, I mean, one of those digital speed signs could be forty two, forty three hundred dollars. If, um, we're trying to look at other alternatives and I want to have a budget line in there. So even if we do things like we did on Smith and Grand where you're doing the white edge lines, that was a huge help down there because now when you're going down those roads, it looks like it's, it's like designated parking. Well, it's not that, that doesn't cost a thousand dollars, but just still, that's a, that's a traffic calming feature and we're looking to try to, you know, maybe look at different other roads where you can start putting edge lines so people feel like, if you feel when you're driving that you have to be a little tighter, you drive slower. That's the concept of them, so that, that's, that's a traffic kind of feature. We're not, this isn't to try to put speed bumps, we're not, they, a, a lot of the towns, they don't work, they pull them out afterwards, so. But I want to have some kind of mechanism so when the, it, when the public says, these people speed down the road, we have something in our toolbox to try to do something. A lot of times it's, you know, okay, we'll get the digital speed sign, we'll take a look at the facts. I mean, those are smart signs, they, they tell you not only the amount of traffic, all the speeds, all so that, we give the information to police, they can do enforcement, we can see if we have to do something with the speed limit. So those digital speed signs and, you know, a lot of times don't have a lot, I think we have seven of them now. So I keep trying to buy one every year because the more you can, everyone wants them in the road and I'm trying to move around, this actually went, my, actually my neighborhood actually bought their own, the association bought their own. So they're pretty, they, they, they're good for, they do slow people down. Most people see them, they flash and they're like, oh crap, I didn't realize I was going with this.
And then on the fleet, on the fleet fuel, um, and this kind of relates to, uh, capital improvement, or I guess it would be capital improvement plan. We, we, we have a, a plan for replacing the police vehicles periodically, right, as we accumulate money?
Yeah, I have nothing to do with that, the police, well, the police, the police do it, they, they, they charge their twenty five dollars an hour and that's what they buy their police cars with.
But are we paying, that, that, that fuel line?
It's out of my line.
It, it comes out of your line, right, for their fuel? So, uh, and then some of the other vehicles, um, as, as we replace vehicles, are there any packages that can come with the police vehicles that allow them, uh, to run on the batteries longer when they're doing a, you know?
It's hard for the police cars, there's so many systems in there. I mean, I did go over, we did, we were doing a fleet policy with my own department and I reminded in the fleet department, in the fleet policy about the, there is an anti, an, an actual anti-idling law now in the state of Connecticut, you're not allowed to idle a vehicle. And we're trying to get our guys to make sure they don't idle, it's, I think you can't idle them on three, three minutes. I'm not telling the police that, cause they have to keep their vehicles running and their sirens running. But just for the, if you want to keep your, if you want to keep your truck warm, now you need to shut the vehicle off.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was some package that would offer.
So we're trying, actually trying, this is like one of the things we're trying to do to save fuel is, you know, it says right in there, don't, you know, don't, um, drive, you know, I, I, I don't know how we say, in the most direct route to a job, like don't drive around town, you know, cause, you know, you can see them on the GPS, you know, so just drive straight to the job. Anything you could do to save fuel.
And then the other thing is we are putting in the, you know, EV chargers, uh.
We are.
And I didn't know if there could, if there was some idea as we replace some of the other vehicles, if we could go to the electric vehicles.
We will have to start considering that, we haven't got there yet. I will work with, uh, in the next, you know, future, looking at, um, the few, the fleet manager we brought in, um, I think you've met Kevin in the past.
Yes.
There's a new, there's a new guy that came from Cromwell, he's fantastic and he's really on top of stuff. He actually has really good data on his fleet maintenance and everything like that. And I will work with him, I, I usually look for the fleet manager to spec the vehicles and we could talk to him about, um, you know, and, you know.
Could be a move in the right direction.
It had to be a light duty vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we can look at some point if, if they're ever, the town.
Although, Seat is gonna be buying some, uh, some electric.
What's that?
Seat is gonna be purchasing some electric buses, so, but here again, that's even light, that's much lighter than, you know, full, you know, dump truck out there plowing and whatnot, so.
Just a thought. That's it for me.
With the idling, uh, the town of Westport bought a Tesla, so their police department, their private duty is a Tesla on the side of the road. And so it's not their active, like the car's not driving around actively, but it's their private duty vehicle, so.
Yeah.
Not here, I'm just from Westport.
You can't get away from one of those things either.
The vehicle costs more than what we, our vehicle is all outfitted and everything else like that. Yeah, and, and here again, having drove it, and now, you know, it's been almost, it's eight years since I drove a cruiser, but you put the lights on, you've got your computer on and stuff like that, if you shut the car off on a warm day or a cold day, you, you go back in twenty minutes and the lights aren't flashing anymore. It's really, and they've got more stuff going on now, you've got the dash cams, you've got the body cams, so that's all gotta be.
Even in the anti-idling law, it says for emergency services, they, they still have to operate.
Yeah. Roseanne?
Yeah, so the issue of the salt and chloride, uh, this has been a concern, ongoing concern of the question of natural resources.
Yep.
And they have, um, had a couple of, uh, meetings with somebody from Water and Sewer and from, um, I think Alex came to one of them and gave a report.
Good.
But one of the big problems is how to address the commercial businesses. We can keep the town under control, but if you go around to many of the businesses, I mean, it's caked on like sea salt. So I think one of the questions that they want to, uh, look into is to see if there's something that can be done to make, uh, the commercial businesses more aware of the dangers. And particularly as we have a lot of businesses along, along, um, the two wells that have the highest content. So perhaps there could be more collaboration for that, to see particularly if we might do some kind of, uh, alert or warning to the commercial businesses to see what they can do.
So that training that we had our people do was actually also starting to be targeted to commercial applicators, which was good. That was the first time it's ever been talked about. Now, whether they actually went, I don't know, but, um, I work, I'm on the advisory board of Yukon and they, they actually were pushing that, which is good because that's a, a start. And second of all, you know, be careful what we ask for because I, the D E P will probably be asking us for actual salt loads real soon. I wouldn't be surprised, which would be for commercial properties. We know exactly how many tons we put down every year. We've been asking the Board of Ed to give us those numbers the last few years and the next will probably be the commercial properties. But I don't, we don't have any jurisdiction, maybe, maybe, maybe land use does. I don't know if it's already, if it's already a property, whether they have it in control. I do remember when like the Coscos came on board and any new development, you can require them to have O and M plans with, with, um, you know, with, um, explanations of what they're doing. You can always put something in a newer, um, permit, but I don't know what you can do about the existings. But we, we will stay on top of it and I was, I was, I think Penny Heller, we were working with Penny and, and some of the people and she gave me a list of questions, I answered them all. So we, we have been trying to work with them to, uh, we, we understand and I wear the two hats, because we, I put down the salt and I don't want the salt. Which part of me talks? So I'm understanding of my water department guys that don't want the sodium and I'm understanding of my highway guys that need to put it out. We just gotta find a balance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Joe, moving, moving on to engineering one oh five. Oh, Kevin?
You wanted to do C I P because this is the only department that has C I P.
Okay, that's good, I, thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on whether we were gonna do that separately. Because it's not on the list.
Yeah.
Three, what is it? Three, what?
Uh, C I P is, uh, it does have a number, it's way in the back.
Yeah.
So, the first one is the roads, um, we're in the, this year, we're in the last year of the four or five year plan I put together four or five years ago. And so we're in the new version of that and we have, if you drive around town, I hope you think that we actually, the town, the road, the roads in town look pretty good. I mean, we, we addressed a lot of issues in town, but when the general person driving around town, they think of all the roads that had to be reconstructed, the worst roads. I mean, we, we addressed a lot of issues in town, but when the general person driving around town, they think of all the roads that have to be reconstructed, the worst roads. But in pavement preservation is, if you don't keep after it, you'll, they'll all get to that point. So, the next generation of iteration, and I have a new five-year plan, is trying to hit all those other roads that we are, had to go cycle every ten, twelve years. And a lot of them are some, going to be some of the more, um, busier roads in town. So, I do have, um, a whole plan, um, that I put together. Um, we've been trying to get out to Grassy Hill Road, which is a really long road from, um, Upper Walnut all the way to the Monmouth Town Line. And that, every year it gets worse on me, and I, every time I try to get up there, um, more stuff goes on. So, between that, we did a lot of work on Scott Road, um, but up to a certain point, if you ever go up that way, the last like twenty-five hundred feet is in really rough shape. You need to do stuff. But then the rest of it is doing a lot of, um, surface treatments. We did, um, I think it was pretty successful. I only got a few comments, but, um, last year we tried a new treatment, kind of rubberized chip. It's a little different, but it goes down because everyone's heard of chip steel, and then no one likes to hear those two words together on a road of theirs. But the rubberized one seems to, first of all, it goes down all in one day, and they sweep it all. So, um, you don't have that nightmare of two weeks of clink, you know, in the cars. And it seems to adhere. We did that on Pine Grove Road, and we did it on Dean Road. And I, I think, for the most part, I think it, it's really going to hold up the roads well, and it's, it's a third the cost of, of a full paving job. We're looking to do that in a lot of other towns, a lot of these other collector roads in town, um, because those are, um, you know, Black Point Road is a road that's very well-traveled. Uh, the Roxbury Road just had that utility trench that was put in there, and I got some money out of EverSource to help fix it, and I was going to put a, a rubberized chip over there. So, it's basically trying to keep after the road. So, um, if the town and the Board of eleven, the Board of Finance can find us that we're going to keep up this program, um, I'd hate to see us, after all the work we've done, get, you know, start stepping backwards. But obviously, that's what boards afford to, um, so I have a full list of what those are, if, if the board is interested in having it. And I can get that to Kevin, Kevin. But, um, so that's the, the town roads, the sidewalks. Um, there was something, um, we put out, my, our town engineer, Alex Close, put something out on a sidewalk plan, and, uh, saw it start hitting the social media. I don't know if you guys saw it, like, everyone's, oh yeah, excited, you know, we've got all these sidewalks. Well, just, just from the posts on the Facebook, I think they spent about two million dollars because there was all this stuff, and I'm asking for twenty-five thousand. So, I mean, that's basically, that, that money, when we do the town sidewalk repairs, what we a lot of times do is we do an audit of town, and all these sidewalks that have differential settlement, where they settle, we just go out and we, we get enough of them, and they slice out all the things. It doesn't look pretty, but it prevents tripping falls and lawsuits and things like that. Um, there are some sections of road, um, sidewalks that are in rough shape that have to be, and we're, and there's also, um, a commitment that towns have to start approving some of the ADA accessible and the, um, ADA ramps. So, we're trying to do this. So, um, with some of the money that we've had in C N R E and the twenty, people, and the twenty-five thousand, that's just, that's not putting in a bunch of new sidewalks. That's basically fixing the ones we have. Um, we are, this isn't part of this budget, but we do have an exciting, um, application to put sidewalks on East Pad against that road, all the way from where it, it ends. They end right past the cemetery, all the way to one sixty-one. Um, and that's a low SIP, um, not low SIP, low SIP, which is, is the money goes through the cog. And, uh, there's only three applications, and they really liked our application. So, and that's involved rebuilding that road too, because that road takes a lot of traffic. So, um, you know, and then we're actually putting, we're looking to put sidewalk in over by, by the Dollar General, all the way on the other side, crossing Flanders Firehouse. When people cross the road, there's a learn that people walking over there, and there's people that want to cross the road. And when they come out that other high school entrance, there's a lot of people that come there, and they want to walk downtown. And it just gives them an opportunity to cross, uh, cross the road safely there. And we've been working, we have a permit. We've been, um, keeping the first letter informed, um, so.
We were hoping to do it, uh, this last fall, but they're putting that new, uh, fifty-five-plus small community right there.
Right in the middle of it.
And right in the middle of it. So, we would have had to stop and then start on the other side so the Philly was now, and then now we can get them to have to do a little bit of it too, so.
We're waiting for them to do their part, and then we can, we would look ridiculous if we built this thing and then didn't put it. So, we're waiting for them to finish. Um, so the next item on here is the purchasing of the M S W. So, people in this town, like, they're garbage cans, like, so garbage cans are going to be, start to become an issue. And for all the people that, when, I mean, Roseanne and others that have been on here for a long time, um, we started this program with those cans nineteen years ago. Those cans were eight, they were, the highest warranty we got was eighteen years. So, almost everyone's can in this town is out of warranty unless you've gotten a newer can. And so, when someone's can is cracked, or our garbage truck puts its arms around it, puts it, and it cracks in half, and they want us to replace it, well, that can't cost ninety dollars, ninety-five dollars. So, um, there's a revenue line for a thing, but there's no spot for me to buy more cans. So, that's buying more cans because when you buy, you don't go to the true value and buy ten cans. You buy a truckload of five hundred cans, and it sounds like a lot. They go out the door very quickly, and everyone wants extra cans. If you are aware, if you remember, I, I bumped the price up, so if someone wanted a second can, it's double the cost. They still don't have to pay for everything that goes in that second can, but they have to pay two-twenty, not one-ten for the can. But that, I'm almost, I'm running out of cans, and once I'm out of cans, I'm out of luck. I don't have any other mechanism to buy more cans. So, every few years, we have to put this in, and I haven't put, uh, um, this through C N R E, and I don't think you've seen this line in five, six years because I'm almost out of cans. So, um, I would highly recommend we do fund it. If we don't, we're going to have a problem because even though we pay, we, we get revenue for, for buying cans, I can't buy those cans out of that revenue line. And there's no line in the highway budget for it because it's really, it's a C N R E item.
Wait a minute, why can't you, why can't you recycle that money for the cans?
What do you mean recycle?
Well, in other words, if they're paying for the cans, then why doesn't that money go to buy additional cans?
You, you, you have to buy the cans in a bulk.
In bulk, you cannot buy one, one at a time.
So, if I did thirty things, this, this, this order might go, this might be good for three years of cans, but I have seventy-five hundred or so, um, or sometimes it's eight thousand. I, I don't know exactly how much is every year, but if you multiply that by three, four years, that's the, that's the load of cans. But you can't, if you try to buy the cans in like maybe fifty cans, the cost per can and the cost of shipping is so high, we try to get a better price by buying more cans in a load. So, unfortunately, every three, four years, you got to bite the bullet and buy a load, or else you're just going to pay high premium. And we do put, buy a, um, a, a, a better quality can because with the way that mechanism, you don't want to buy a cheaper can, and then after six months, you know, shh, and then all of a sudden, you don't have a can. If we, if we dump a can in our hopper, we give someone a free can. That's our fault. But if, if the can is old and it's just cracked, you know, we, we, every can has a serial number, and we look up the serial numbers, they're all coded, so we know when it was, can, was that can was made, and we know if it's under warranty. If it's under warranty, we give you a free can. If you don't, it's a hundred and ten dollars. And people don't want to hear that because they think that's part of their taxes. But I don't have another line to pay for those, so it's not part of their taxes. Um, the highway vehicles, we're only looking to replace two. We, we don't have any big, like, garbage trucks, and it takes through the American Rescue Fund, uh, we were able to purchase a truck, and I don't have any dump trucks. There's two, um, there's two, uh, um, there's a pickup truck that's a two thousand nine, that's fourteen years old. And then there's a, um, a utility body that's a two thousand ten that really need to get moved on from the fleet. Um, with one of these, we're looking, it's a more expensive, it's not just a pickup, it's, um, we're trying to get one that has a hook truck, so you can pick up different mech. It's a much more functional vehicle these days. A lot of departments are going to this. It's just, it's a much more versatile vehicle that you could have a, you could pick up and put a sander on it. You could pick up and put a, um, you know, a body, you could put a leaf thing, a leaf thing. It's like a five-in-one truck. Um, that's what we're looking to, and then the other one is just a straight pickup, uh, replacement. So, that's the, that's the, uh, two oh seven. Um, the plant stand, again, is a, that's an amount, um, for, and at this time at least, it says analysis and testing. That dam is in rough shape, and, um, I, I think I got too, a little too, um, creative last year and tried to put twenty thousand on low SIP to try to do the testing. Low SIP does not require, allow you to do, spend money on testing. It has to be for a project. So, even though you might have heard about this low, uh, plant stamp dam last year, I didn't do anything with it because I couldn't charge it to low SIP. Because when I slid the fine print, you couldn't do it. So, now I'm trying to do it towards C N R E. So, because we had to do some destructive testing and, you know, test the concrete and stuff like that to figure out what's going on with that dam. Um, the municipal, uh, ADA compliance, you've heard about, but that's low SIP. Um, the one seventy-five probably won't even be enough, but that's all I have. The way low SIP is, we have an account, and I keep track of the account. I go over the account with Director Finance. We put in for projects that are based on, in this program, but you can only spend as much as it's in the account. And all I had left in the account was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I put every penny towards it because we need to put a lift in this building. We need to upgrade the bathrooms. There's a lot of different things. We're working with a building official. Um, we're, our engineering department is, is, um, doing all the work on doing all the, uh, looking at all the plans so that we don't have to hire someone that can save some money. We try, we have some good ideas to, um, to provide the ADA and access that this building deserves at a very affordable price. Um, so we got, and it's all in compliance with building officials, so we're working on that now. And I think, um, I think we're required to send the stuff to Department of Justice by August.
Yeah, yeah.
At least our plan.
At least our plan.
I wanted to have some money in low SIP so we can start knocking these things out. It's like ADA accessible, uh, the bubblers, the bathrooms, uh, that, uh, every counter, there's a lot of things in this building.
Oh, I know. Yeah, for, yeah, it's, I mean, and, you know, it, the only, the, the major things are going to be the bathrooms and the, and the.
The lift.
Yeah. But there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Like, yeah, that, that, that back, the, the ramp to, uh, go downstairs is just, uh, correct, so. Um, the, uh, paint Brookside Farm, I had that in the plan about forty thousand about two years ago, and, um, that's, that's a heck of a lot, more than forty thousand, I found out when I started getting in bids and stuff like that. That, that building's in pretty rough shape, and that's unfortunately, because I didn't have the money, then we haven't done, so I'm trying to put the right money. I got a price a little under, because once it starts getting into that, it becomes a prevailing wage job. Um, so I'm trying to get this thing finally taken care of, and we did some testing on the paint too, so. That's, that project really needs to be done. It looks to me like one of the, one of the, I mean, both, both of the nine fire department roofs need to be, need to be replaced. It looks like one of them is still being carried.
Yeah, I asked.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The, 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 the one on Grant Street.
So, the main station, which is the main station, plus they've actually had put a lot of antennas, a lot of things over the years into the roof, and they didn't talk to us. And so, there's issues at roof, but we got to get that roof replaced. So, um, I had a company look at it. They gave me pricing on it. We really, and, um, we, we really should move forward with that, if I can read right. Um, oh, the next, the next, yeah, the roof, the, the next two, the, the townwide roof is just for the repairs, like, you know, it's not for replacing it. It's like, so for instance, now, um, unfortunately, yeah, um, the cost of like, say, the community center roof is so expensive, but in the meantime, until we can fund it, we have to go out there and fix things, things that are going on with these roofs. So, the, the various townwide roof problem helps to keep some of these roofs going, and if there's a small roof, like, if we have a shed or something out of one of the parks and rec facilities, we can work on it. But that's not to replace any roof. That's to fix them and do the smaller ones. The, um, the very, the roof, um, that line, roof replacement line. The, the next one, the H V A C pump replacement, um, I, I, I proposed twenty thousand in the past fifteen. These system, the whole purpose of these C N R Es is to put money in buckets so that I don't have to keep coming to hit the contingency. But we've been getting, the last two years, I've been getting a lot of systems breaking, and I haven't come to this board, and I, that, there's, there's like five hundred dollars left in that account, and that account had like thirty thousand a few years ago. I, I have another, I have another system at the community center that went the other day, so we really need to put more money into that. That's a pretty important. And the steel, the public safety building is something I'm working with you guys.
Yeah, that's.
And that's.
That's more than I, I think that's more than we're going to need based on what, um, but, but that, we won't have to tax for that at all too.
Is there anything else?
If I could just talk to, Joe had put the two-plus million dollars in for the, um, community center, which is a needed thing, but we're doing a feasibility study, and we're not going to have the results of that. And, you know, before you put a new roof on, you want to make sure you're not talking about any type of expansion or whatever the recommendations were there. So, that's why that was, uh, taken out of the budget, out of the capital plan.
And, and there was two options, that there was a standing seam metal one, which is the better way to go in a fifty-year life. There's also the re-shingling. That's for the higher cost one, because I'd rather put that in there and have the discussion. But when, and it's obviously out of there now, but in future years, we're going to have to do something. That roof is thirty-two years old. Um, I, I want the, the policymakers to know all the facts. You can do this, so you can do that.
Thirty-four years old, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to be nice, but yeah, it's probably that way. Um, is there any other? Yeah, is there any other SIP lines? I think that's it.
That's it. Any questions for Joe? I think you explained that pretty well, so.
Yes, I would like to know, um, what the difference is between, uh, the lift and the elevator.
So, a lift, an elevator is what you would normally think of as an elevator. It's a cab closed, it's like that, has an elevator shaft. A lift is something that's still got an opening, but it's not, it doesn't have the whole cab. It's like you would go in and sit, it's just, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a, just a step-down version of a whole elevator. Um, if you've ever seen them, they, uh, like, and what we're looking to do, it is in the foyer here, um, over in the corner, you can drop down. So, if someone were to come in and want to go, like a wheelchair, or someone that wants to go in, they'd walk in on this side of the door and this side, they'd go down, and they'd actually drop down to, if you ever been in my office, or in the Public Works Office, there's a little alcove to the right, that, there's a space, and that would drop down there. We'd have to cut into the concrete wall, and that person would then come out and exit into the, um, into the hallway down there. But it's, 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 it's a much more scaled-down version than, it's not a full, um, elevator cab than a, a lift is, is, yes.
It, it does mean.
I'm basically not describing, but it's, it's a smaller version than a full-scale cab.
And here again, it's because it's only one floor. If this were a three or four floor thing, it'd be a little different.
It has to be safe, and it has to be confined, but it doesn't have to be a full enclosed cab with a, um, you know, elevator shaft and all, and all that stuff like that. It's a lot, and the other thing is, a lot of those other ones have to have hydraulics underneath them to lift them up because of the size. The lifts actually can have some of the equipment on the side because it's not as heavy and smaller, so you don't have to, you know, dig into the, into the foundation of the building. You could have the equipment on the side. So, it's, it's a, um, less expensive, and it's, it meets the purpose of what we're trying to do, and we're trying to design in a way that makes sense to the people.
Is that large enough so that an, an attendant can get into that?
It should, it should be.
It's large enough.
It's not, yeah, it's not going to be a minimal size. It will be a satisfactory size.
And here again, the ADA, one of the things, they never said we needed to have a lift or an elevator. This was something that was, you know, town staff, escarp padding the building, said, we need to do this right because, you know, on a snowy day, you have to have someone go outside and around the back. And this will, what we'll do is the entrance, the, maybe I want, just give them a little explanation of how they're going to access, getting into the building.
Yeah, so through the whole ADA code is that you have to give the same rights to someone in a wheelchair, something like that, than everyone else. So, they should be able to enter the same front door as everyone else. So, most everyone enters the side door, which would be impossible. So, what we're going to try to do is re, um, we're going to rework the front. Well, I have an issue already with the brick parapets out here on that far side. So, if we remove the brick parapets where the stairs are and put an actual handicap ramp coming from the parking lot up around the front and make it nice, highway guys can put the concrete in, we can do all the earthwork. You don't have to be digging into this building with a huge construction project, and you could make it look nice with landscaping, but, and then all the handicap spots would be right up in the front. Now, you're telling everyone in the, the public, this is the front entrance. Everyone uses this front entrance, and oh, by the way, the handicap and the, all the, um, all the people wheelchairs, like, that are coming through the same entrance, which comes into a huge foyer with a sign there. And oh, by the way, if you want to go downstairs, there's going to be a lift right in the corner. It's going to be very well-marked, and then you drop down and you do it. So, it, it's, it's the best, I think it's the best version because it still meets the purpose of what you're trying to do. It kind of utilizes better the big foyer that we have instead of jamming everyone into that side, side entrance. And it also is probably half to the third the cost. So, I think it's a home run if we can do this. But our, our staff, um, is working on it. They're putting together the plans so they can bring to Department of Justice, and, um, we're working with a building official, and he's totally on board with it. We just want to make sure, we talked to Mr. Mahoney and all of that, because we are going to be doing some work in the front of the building, so we have to be sensitive to make sure, you know, landscaping and that the front, the front looks right. But it, it's just, it's the right thing to do, I, I think. It's just going to make it look a little different.
Thank you, because this is gonna be a one-time job. It's gonna be the only time we've got the money.
Correct.
Um, and we want to make sure that these people are treated with respect so that they don't feel different than other, than others.
And that's, we came up with the front. This is the better way because then we're gonna funnel, I mean, we're, our thought is to make that side entrance, so employee entrance. And then everyone should be funneled to the front. It's not that much farther, the stairs right there. We're gonna, that ramp, the, the ramp is right outside of Kevin's office, that's gonna go away. That'll probably be a planter because we're not, that ramp doesn't meet the, the proper slopes. So we're gonna get rid of that ramp. But all that kind of stuff can be done whether by staff or, or relatively, relatively cheap. You just pull it out and then landscape it and make it look nice. As opposed to if you had to build an elevator shaft in this building, like we were gonna have to do, it was gonna be really expensive.
Yeah, just watching Joe, Bill Shear, uh, the engineering staff and building people come up with these ideas over the last few weeks. Because the first thought was, uh, maybe a lift or an elevator in the side door. But it doesn't work, it's too confined in that. So instead of just saying no, we can't do it, they worked the problem and they came up with a really good answer that's more cost effective and more sensitive to the needs of those it's gonna have to serve. So I think we have a really great job.
We have a statement, it makes too much sense.
Yeah.
We like, we like that, when it makes too much sense.
Okay, ready to move on to, uh, engineering? This shouldn't be too long.
Yeah, I mean, I think Ann Santoro had already asked us a question on the sampling. So it's really not much here. Um, certainly, I mean, I know the night's getting late, but, uh, the only really thing of just, just to let everyone know that, um, in the town engineer's budget, it did bump up. Um, for any of you guys that haven't met Alex, our, our new town engineer, he's fantastic. When he came on board, um, you know, um, he, the salary we gave him, we tried, we corrected his salary this year to more commeso where he should be. So that's why you see a higher percentage, but he's still less than what the former town engineer was making and he's doing a fantastic job. So, um, besides that, the town engineer, the, the civil engineers with Peter Gilberto, which is downstairs, he's one that's doing a lot of this ADA workforce. He's, he's tackling it like unbelievable. Admin assistants, seventy-five percent of our assistant downstairs is charged a town, uh, she's charged twenty-five percent to water. Um, the stormwater management is, is up two thousand. Um, Alex had asked me that, that the sampling requirements are, are more stringent and you have to do them. So, um, that's why, and, and the rest is just, um, small, small numbers. So if you have any questions, I'd like to answer.
Just to let people know too, that Alex will be leaving for an extended period, uh, March, April timeframe with a, he's gonna, his National Guard unit is being activated. So, uh, we'll make sure we, we have a proper farewell for him before he takes off.
Yep, yep, we're proud of him.
Yes, very much so.
And how long is he going to be gone?
Uh, I believe nine months.
Nine months.
So what are we gonna do for coverage?
Um, we're sharing the duties. Um, me, Bill Shear and, uh, Justin Porter, the highway superintendent are gonna divvy up things.
Cause some miserly guy said, no, you can't.
I'm looking to make some modifications, the highway department, which I told the first slepman, I'm not asking for any more money and elevating some guys to crew leaders and taking on some more responsibility that will help. The highway superintendent helped me, helped Bill cover these duties when we're away. So, um, we, we basically have it covered.
And while he's on leave, are we, uh, from this job, are we obligated to?
No. He, he'll be making his, we would have to make up the difference if he was being shorted, but he'll not immediately make compensation more because of his rank.
Okay, thank you.
Good question though, very good question.
So last, uh, is there any other questions on the engineering?
I have, I have a question going back to just public works on.
Sure.
Do you have a, um, maintenance schedule for tree maintenance? I mean, you, you do that with the roads. You have, you have a road schedule of, you know, year by year. Do you, I mean, do you have an area, problematic areas that you?
So, so there's, there's a few ways to tackle it. There's obviously the dead trees in, in the reactive way, but there's also the, um, you know, the tree canopies that are coming down. And we do have, we do try to go through those so that, you know, that's all more preventive trimming. And so that, that's what you're getting. So we do have something where we kind of keep, um, keep a track of, especially the country roads. Actually, because if you drive down most roads, I, there's not a lot of low hanging trees. That's why I like to get on the road because you see, if you see it, take care of it. So, but we don't have anything like the pavement management plan or something like that. Um, but we, we do keep after it and, um, our, our guys, we have some guys that are pretty talented as well. And we're doing as much as we can, as high as we can, um, right now. And this year is because it's been lighter this year, I mean, more temperate, they've done a lot of work this one, um, which, they've done a lot of tree trimming this year, which is great.
Okay, thanks. I see some very dead trees around the Flanders and High School complex.
On the property?
It looks to be, they're oak trees that I think suffered through, you know, gypsy moth infestation. And I, I mean, they, they're by the parking lot area.
Yeah, so it is still, that, that's kind of like a little catch twenty-two because it's still the Board of Ed property. And, and Chris Lund is the facilities manager and they really, we should be working together. I do meet with them quarterly and it's, you know, when we talk about salt, we talk about trucks, we talk about fuel. One of the things we need, should talk about is trees to, to, you know, because I'm supposed to be the one posting them and they should be taking them down. But if there's a tree that needs to be taken down, it really should be taken down by them in their budget. It's their property that they're overseeing, but, but we work together. So if, I, I can talk to Chris and look up there, but, uh, that, that, in my opinion, unless they feel differently, that budget that we have that you saw in there, I don't go on the Board of Ed property and cut down their trees. They, they, they should be, they should be taking that out of their budget as, as part of maintaining their, maintaining their property. We, there was some overlap at the middle school by Smith Harris house in there. And there were some trees I cut down on the other side of the road that, you know, but that road that cuts through the middle school is actually their road. But I just didn't want the trees falling on the cars. And we, we take it, we take a lot of trees down at the Smith Harris house. Have you ever been up there now? I, I, we probably taken about twenty, twenty-five trees down. It still looks nice up there, but there was a lot of dead stuff up there and I didn't want it falling on the building or falling on the road.
And it's a safety issue, you know, the, the dead trees.
There was a lot of ash trees there.
Get them down.
Okay, we, we can listen.
Don't, don't they have to be a registered tree warden in order to take those down?
No, to.
For who to take? No, they just need to let me, well, so the statute is, um, if a tree is dead, then a tree warden can say it takes down. You don't have to post it. And the Board, the Board of Ed should be talking through, that is a town property still as far as the state's concerned. But I cover the, I am a registered tree, uh, tree warden, so I'm the designated.
And Justin is your deputy.
And, and the highway superintendent is the deputy, so he can also, uh, post things.
Just one quick question. So you said the town engineer is Alex Close and he's leaving for nine months, so.
Well, he, you still have to, you still have to keep it in there because Uncle Sam can change his mind.
Exactly, we don't want, you know, or if he comes back early, you know.
And it's kind of a, we, and, and we really rather not like take it out of the budget because first of all, he might not go. And second of all, I might hate to have a, create a hole in the, but, I mean, he's coming back and because he's serving the country, he's, he's getting his job back when he gets back. So we, you know, you guys can figure that all out.
We've talked, we've talked about that, you know, we leave it there because we're, because in fact, it, it might be a little bit later now he's going. I, I think it'll be gone with the budget season such, but we're not really sure before that. But we don't, our, the next budget, but we don't want to guess and oops, I came back five months early and oops, we, we took too much money out of account. Cause here again, with, with the military, that could change very quickly.
Yeah, and that's why he's, he's told us, but just, you know, it's not absolute because they can change their mind.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the last item, uh, building maintenance.
Yep. So I'm not asking for any additional employees. This is a pretty, if anything, trying to keep up with everything. Um, on the custodian line, the first line, three eleven, um, the percentages always seem high, but again, it's the same theme that. It's, the, yeah, the amended, the amended budget really doesn't reflect the true costs this year because that, that all the, all the salary increases are in a, um, are in a salary contingency line. So as I, as I said, there's no new people I'm asking for. And, and just as an update, because we were always worried about that, how are we gonna maintain the, the, the new public safety building? I talked to the chief lately, we, we did some shifting that the person, um, the person that we brought, oh, George, who used to be here, we went over there. He got going, well, he came back here. Um, the police are very happy. The building's being kept nice. Uh, we're doing it at thirty hours a week. Um, the guy that's over there is doing a great job. So we're, 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 we're sustaining right now and it's because our staff is doing a really good job, but we're not asking for any other people. Um, the big one on here, the overtime is something that I need to explain. So I didn't, I'm not, I was, I was kind of forced to put this. I support other townspeople, but this is what's going on. And the Board of Finance can see, like, right now, my overtime budget's like three thousand over. Um, the last two years, uh, or years ago, when Parks and Rec had activities on Saturdays, the staff used to open, the Parks and Rec staff used to open the building. And on Sundays, the, the, the library would open the building. There was no custodial staff. Once COVID hit, it became much more of an issue of cleaning. And then it became an issue of, we really shouldn't have, you know, I think one of the people, it was Carol, I think, it used to open the building in Parks and Rec. But we really needed, from a security standpoint, a custodian to come in like at the Board of Ed to do the same thing. Unlock the building, disarm it, lock it up, do their cleaning during the day, make sure the bathrooms are okay. So that's been the arrangement the last two years is I've now been providing my staff person, the custodian that's working, the night custodian that works the community center Monday, Wednesday, Friday, also works eight hours on Saturday. And then we have coverage four hours on Sunday. Right now, the last two years, the, the Saturday coverage, eight hours of coverage has been being paid by the Parks and Rec activity account because Dave Putnam said that they will pay for it because they needed, they wanted to have activities in there. And Lisa Timothy from the library said, we'll pay for the four hours for Sunday because we want someone there for the library. That's what's been happening, that's what's happening right now. Now, if you get a report of my budget and overtime, what happens is my budget gets charged and then it gets reimbursed by those accounts. So right now, we just haven't had a chance to reimburse it. So it shows that the accounts over. This eighteen, nineteen thousand is the true cost of what that is. And we sat down with, I sat down with, um, not only Kathy Wilson, Lisa Timothy and Jerry Locken. And they were all, all the towns should be paying that, not, not the library or the, um, or the, uh, activity funds. I said, okay, well then I'll put on my budget, but please come and support me when you put the budget. So it's here, that's what, that's what, that's why there's nineteen thousand on there. But right now, that's some, it's, we're providing it right now, but it's being paid for by other sources. So, um, I, I have other costs that are blowing out of control on the public building maintenance side, but this is something that's being covered by, because the library is open on Sundays. And so that's, it's gonna be a Board of Southern or Board of Finance, and if they want to keep that in, that's fine. But that, I'm just, that's what's happening right now. So that's why, um, the overtime budget's going from three thousand to twenty, it's not that my people are going crazy with hours. It's just that that coverage happens fifty-two weeks a year or, or for more, um, the, the, I believe the, um, library doesn't use Sunday hours in the summer. So it's like forty hours in the summer, uh, forty, not including the summer, but fifty-two weeks on Saturday. Um, when you get into contracted operations, um, some of the service contracts, just like everything else are going up, HVAC contracts and everything like that, so there's an increase in that line. Building maintenance, um, so this building maintenance line is basically everything that I can't anticipate. But that, that is becoming more of an issue with all these buildings. Um, so there's a lot of pressure on that line. So I would highly encourage you to keep that in there. If it's, if it's, if it's not funded with that increase, I might have to be back to this board of asking. I just try not to come back and ask for every little thing, but, um, I'm just finding it's just, there's just a lot of things that are breaking um, in these buildings and that, that's, that's what, that's how we pay for it. The fire protection line, I've said it every, the last ten years, it's, it's this thing that the water department is trying to get that amount back up to where it was in the seventy-five thousands twenty years ago. Telephones, um, there's a, um, a little increase. Um, there's actually an increase in the state fiber, um, I think of five hundred. And then there's a few more cell phones that came online, so that's why there's a thousand dollars more. I was actually able to drop the custodial supply line by a few thousand. And I heard the chief say something about the jail costs. This is almost the same thing is now that I, like I added, I think, five thousand because the public safety building's come up. And once you stock up and you stabilize, I'm realizing that I think we're economies of scale. We, we didn't need the five thousand right now, so that's why we were able to drop that now that we've stocked up those buildings and got the, the different vacuums and all the things that we need. Um, and the, the last of the lines is, is, is the heating oil. Um, so actual expense of heating oil was in twenty twenty-two is eighty-six. Um, unfortunately, this year, I, I, and I, I sent an email to, um, Director Finance at First Slepmen about a month or two ago. We, we've been very fortunate, it's been a light winter, but when, when you do these budgets, so my budget for this year's budget was done last December. In January, the energy markets took off, if you recall, this past spring. And everything went crazy after the Ukraine stuff and all of that. So even in this year, I have a huge, I mean, I'm predicting, I'm probably gonna, this, this a hundred thousand dollar lineup is gonna come in at about a hundred fifteen, a hundred twenty this year. So the hundred twenty-two was, was a more realistic unit cost number of what it's gonna be for the fuel oil for next year and the propane for next year. So that's why there, even though there's a big jump, it's really not because I'm, I'm dealing with it right now of those increased costs as everyone is at their own houses as far as what you pay this year as opposed to what you paid two years ago. So, um, as I said, there's nothing new I'm specifically adding, but I'm just trying to have a responsible budget to keep up.
You know, highlight two, you may have, but, uh, the two sixty-two four for electricity. You did a really good job of locking into where we're, we're good for a little bit longer than that. We did not get hit with that massive.
Well, yes, we have a five-year contract and our contract ends the December, after December two thousand twenty-four. So we, and we're paying, you know, like everyone in their changing their houses, like every source went to like twenty-three cents. We're paying seven right now, so for till December two thousand twenty-four. So that, this line's gonna get some pressure next year, but right, uh, or two, not next fiscal year.
Next year, yeah.
Yeah, next, not this one, we're talking about the following.
Twenty-four, twenty-one.
But yeah, that, that, and that was a good move. And that, that's one of the big costs that is in the Board of Ed is they had to renew this year and I think they went up to like fourteen, they double, double.
They missed the big hit, but they still got hit a little bit harder.
Yeah, I mean, they're paying probably double supply than ours. And, and that's, that goes for water and sewer and town, so that's, that's a big nut right there.
Any questions for Joe on the, uh, maintenance of town buildings? Okay, Joe, thank you for a really thorough report on several different, uh, units, uh, apartments and so forth. So this completes our agenda, so, uh, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, all of us in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all for a very long and very productive night.